We call the meeting door. A second.
So moving second to open, all in favor to vote? All right, we're gonna open the meeting tonight, the meeting with the Bealeville School Board to discuss the current status and the next steps of our bond issues in addition down at the Portland High School. Thank you guys for coming. Chris, do you want to start this? You do want me to?
Um, go ahead.
The questions that are out there right now, and I'm sure you guys have fielded some of these too, is, um, I think we all know the why it went over. Construction's gone up and there's other things that I think we're misinformed on regarding this. Biggest question that I'm getting is, when did we actually know that 1.6 million dollars was not going to cover this project? Does anyone know that answer? Because I know we have signed documents after the vote in April or March that clearly states that it was more than 1.6 million dollars.
I was not aware of it until what, December when we were?
Was it December that we come through?
It was December that the school board was over.
Sounds alright. So is it fair to say that we knew last March, Bill, that this project was gonna be over by 1.6?
No, it's not fair to say that.
Okay. Now, we had a meeting next door in the kitchen with Blatt Associates that went over the full scope of this project.
Right.
And at the time, 1.6 billion dollars was going to be enough to fund this project.
And we're talking about, mm, 2018 early?
Uh, I believe it was November. What was the date of the?
I think December 2018 is when, oh, is what this cost estimate is.
Right.
And then in, we went out in October for a public hearing. And it was, and we asked for 1.6.
In 18 or 19?
In 18, in October of 18, we asked for 1.6.
October of 18.
And December of 18, we were still looking at 1.6, but by April of 2019, we were at 3.5, 3 to 3.5.
Now, so is it fair to say in between December, when we voted on it, to when these actual documents were signed, that Blatt realized they couldn't do this building for 1.6 million dollars?
And it wasn't until we went out to-
To bid.
To bid, the contractors. And the numbers that we were working off for the October 18 had been formulated back in May of 18, spring of 18, and then processed and brought through to the bond issue. So at this point in time, we're talking about almost two-year-old figures. And statewide, what's happened is the cost of construction has gone up significantly.
I don't think 100 percent, Bill.
I'm, I don't know about 100 percent, but I know Portland's facing a $21 million shortfall on their construction right now.
But, so, between December and signed documents, we determined that it was gonna be more than 1.6 million dollars to build this. The next question is, why at that point did we not regroup and take on this issue?
Because the process by the board was that we had the feeling we had a full 5.3 million, that our primary objective was to build the addition to the cafeteria.
But that's not, these guys didn't know anything about these numbers, because the additional renovation numbers had nothing to do with the addition.
No, no, that's all what I'm saying. I'm saying that we had, under our thought process, the full amount of the bonds, the two together, to do the construction. We had done the roofs and thought we had a significant amount of dollars left to complete the cafeteria project, until you came forward and said, "You can't do that."
Yeah, but that's, we're talking many months later here. We're talking in April, we have a document assigned that says that the, the building was gonna cost more than 1.6 million. And I just heard from your board members that said they didn't know anything about it.
We didn't know that they was gonna go over.
Well, again, I-
If it was, it was only a little bit.
We discussed, um, a few months ago, and again, we didn't find out, we thought we had 5.3 million to do the building and as many renovations as we could, heating upgrades and everything like that. And our understanding was, I guess it didn't alarm us until we were told, we only had 1.6 million to spend on that.
Okay.
That wasn't the case, though, Sheridan. I'm just gonna tell you this, from April of last year, when we awarded O'Day, I distinctively asked Bill to make sure that gentleman come in here, so that we weren't gonna be going over 1.6 million dollars, because that's all we had. And every single month, I sat there and said that.
Oh, O'Day didn't get involved, what, what did, O'Day had to get, had to basically get a contract to, to project manager, then they had to go out for bids.
Right.
So this didn't happen just as soon as we gave O'Day the go-ahead. They didn't know at this time, at that time, what the, what it was gonna cost. That was my understanding.
Correct.
On April 1st, what we signed was something that said 3 to 3.5.
From who? Nixon O'Day?
Yeah. Kent Ward, Carl Ward. That was part of the appendix aid to the AIA contract.
See, part of the issue that we have is that, and again, we had to do this in a two-step process in order to get the funds done correctly, that renovations was away from your actual new building. And I, I still don't know, do you guys have a new boiler system in at high school?
No, it's set to go into construction this summer. Can't do it while, while in session.
Well, why didn't it get done last summer?
We weren't in a position to bid that out at that point, Nickerson O'Day had a contract.
It still had to be designed.
It hadn't been designed.
But, okay, again, the taxpayers could've come back and said no to the 1.6 million dollars. So you would've been left with, all we have is the renovation money. Now, the taxpayers come back and said they were gonna vote 1.6 million. So I'm still at a loss, like, okay, so it wasn't designed, but why wasn't it designed? Because at the time when both these bonds went out, you had no idea whether the townspeople were gonna approve these projects.
I mean, correct.
You could've had, why wouldn't they have got 3.4 to do your two schools?
When we as a board began to look at it, we did a list of priorities.
Right, which was?
Which was the, gonna, tell me if I, I may get this incorrect, but, um, my understanding is we started, we wanted to be sure that we did the roof of both buildings, the heating of both buildings, and the cafeteria.
Correct.
There were some things that were at the bottom of the list, that, because our understanding was that we were gonna be able to use the money in both bonds and work our way down through this list.
And I get that, that makes sense. I understand where some confusion could be there.
And then, so, as we worked our way through this, we knew two-year-old bids, we knew that things had changed, but, like Sheridan said, we weren't allowed, because we knew that the funds were there, we knew we were gonna be able to do this.
But they actually were.
But we had 5 point, we had enough funds to get down through to-
But, but base-
-portion of the list. The bottom of the list, which was the outside, those we felt if we didn't get to them, they would be taken care of through our maintenance.
But, but you, but that's not what you presented to the taxpayers. Okay? See, the problem that you have here is that you put 3.4 million for renovations, and 1.6 million, and we're just using round numbers here, for 5 million dollars. Well, we have a signed document that you signed to build the cafeteria with nothing about renovations for 3.1, 3.5 to 3.5 million. So right there, you're already over by 1.6 million based on what you've taken to the taxpayers. So I don't understand, and this is where I, you know, I'm having trouble answering this, is why we did not regroup at that time? I, I don't know if it's communication-
Because we felt, if you look at the bond for the 5.3, that it says for repairs and additions. And we felt that that meant we had 5.3. The 3.8, I'm talking about.
But, Bill, you had a list of, and you give them to us at the last meeting, of renovations that were gonna cost well above 3.4 million dollars.
3.8, 3.8.
Right, so-
I think we're under at this point. We've been over on some of the projects, we're significantly going to be under on the boiler side.
That you know of right now? I mean, you, I mean, have you even, do you have a bid on that?
Yes, 7 and 8. Prepare the 1.4 with budget. Which is significantly under, although some of the other projects were over.
And, and have you taken that bid to the people in Winter Harbor to do the apples-to-apples?
It's all been done already.
So, so Chris has that?
There was a bid process that went out.
I understand, but when we had our meeting-
I'm not the general contractor, I don't remember that.
All right, well-
I thought a couple minutes ago, we said that the bidding system wasn't designed.
My, my question is, that, that 3, the 3 point-
Back at that point, it wasn't.
Nickerson O'Day was hired not only to oversee the cafeteria, but also the heating upgrades and everything. So I, where does it say in that 3.5 million, that was just for the cafeteria?
Again, my understanding was 3.5 was for repairs and additions as the bond was written, the last word in the bond writing, I believe says additions.
We did, we did two different questions. One, because we could get started early, we did the renovation question in June of 18, which allowed us to go out with 3.5.
But the bond, when you read the question in the bond, is the last word, not additions? That's my question.
However, what you put before-
No, no, not however. It's the last word of the 3.5 additions.
You're making, you're making money. What the attorney's telling us is that-
I know what the attorney's telling you.
People voted on this for 1.6, for the cafeteria addition, okay? It was not what was presented to the people when, when we had our public hearings. Everything on that 3.5 was presented as being repairs and renovations. This is what we went out with in November, that we had to do a referendum vote. You had to actually get people to, you know, vote, mark the X. It wasn't just, you know, by hand at town meeting.
When we brought the first one in, it was for the full, full 5.3 to do all of it.
And your, and your attorneys wanted us to separate that?
Right, and that was an issue of quick start, in order to get a quick start on it. And so, the first one went out with repairs and additions, because it was a feeling we'd be starting the repairs before we'd be starting the addition. So they rephased it, however, and they took some estimates on some costs to do that, both on the repairs and the addition.
So do you feel we have any actions that we can take against, one, the attorneys, or two, Blatt Associates, based on the information that was presented and how it was formulated and presented to the people, Bill?
I guess the wording on that first bond, 3.5, our impression was it was for repairs, you know, so we could get started up from it. And for additions, we could start the addition process. And it, it says repairs and additions, I'm sorry, that's words. The second one was to complete the repairs, because we knew we were gonna go to 5.3. We only took 3.8 upfront. And our understanding was at that point in time, we could just move forward with a full 5.3 to do, uh, the addition was the primary outcome or objective of the board, along with the heating and roofs. And we, we wanted the facility to have a roof over it, we wanted it to have a better heating system.
But at the time, you did not even know if the people were gonna approve putting the cafeteria in.
Correct, that's why the first bond was significantly for additions, I mean, for repairs and additions. We wanted to get the roofs done first, we're gonna hopefully get the cafeteria in place and work on the heating system. Those were the three outcomes and objectives.
But that wasn't what was sold to the, sold to the taxpayers in the public hearing. It was the repairs and renovations. There was, the cafeteria was gonna be done totally separate.
Correct.
Well, that sounds a different phase.
And in reality, that's not the way it was originally proposed and put together. It was put together as a 5.3 to do all of the above, with no separation. The reason for the separation, as, as we stated, was we expected to be able to start to repair the roofing right away and put it out to bid and get that process started. So immediately, the numbers were separated with the estimated accounts, or estimated amounts. And in reality, we could've come in significantly under the repair side, so we had money left over for the addition.
That's, that's not what you presented to the taxpayers.
But we still have to go to the taxpayers to spend that money.
What we, what we started out with in the, in the very first was a full 5.3. That's, that was the discussion and what was being presented.
So do you think there's, there's some communication breakdown with that and what actually got presented?
Oh, yeah, I, I don't disagree with that at all.
Because the next question that, that I have on this, again, we're still working down there, we're trying to work together. I think we need to have a better communication moving forward on any of these types of projects, so that, one, we don't fall into this trap. But do we have a plan B if the taxpayers turn this down?
Do we have a plan B?
Has your board got together with the building committee to say, "Okay, what if this doesn't get approved?"
The board is the building committee.
I understand that, but I, I don't know if they're all on it.
Yeah.
I mean, I have no idea. But do we have some action?
No, I think at this point in time, we're on a wait and see, because we're not sure where to go. Quite honestly, we're-
I mean, this is all new to, we didn't know until a month or so ago. We thought that we had 5.3 million, and we were setting our priorities, making sure that, so basically, we went from 1.6 to 2.8 on the building, so another 1.2. We had, so we were gonna make sure the cafeteria was number one, heating upgrades were number two, and we had basically set our priorities to the 5.3. We did not realize until quite recently, at least as a board, that we could not combine that. Our understanding was, so that's why we have not, no, we have not come up with plan B.
But I don't understand why the board was misled with that, because at no time was the addition to that school approved until the voters voted it. We can't spend that type of money. It just can't be done. But yet, we were doing it. I mean, had, had this not surfaced, we would've been over budget on this.
We thought we had the 5.3 million to build the cafeteria and perform upgrades to the schools to up-
But you're misleading the taxpayers.
Well, we didn't know that. I didn't know that till a month ago. We didn't know it.
We're down to 2.8 right now, correct?
I don't know.
It was 2.8, it was 2.8.
What, what was it at its high point?
What was it at its high point, 5.3?
No, 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 just the cafeteria.
3.8.
3.8, and it's down to 2.8.
And we just signed for some more, so it's probably below that now, but at the point when we did, when I did that last report, it was a 2.8.
But I thought if we signed on 2.1, they were at 3.1 million, done deal.
If we signed on 2-
Whatever their-
3, 3, 3 to 3.5 is what-
Well, I know with the original, but on 2.1, you had a, you had a meeting with Nickerson O'Day that their cost was gonna cost you-
I was hoping Carl would be here tonight, but it's a 2.8 something right now. This, this project, you have to understand, is not a straight bid-build project. Help me, it is called-
Design-build.
It is called a design-build, where the contractor's job is to find the least expensive way to build it. And as they continue to redefine both the design process and get into it, it's not a, a process of expanding the cost. The process is coming in under that cost, with the bid price being the maximum. If it goes over that cost, the contractor eats it. If it goes under that, we get it back.
I get that, I'm, I'm fully aware of the concept. But back in February, we had a meeting, Pat, you were here, and Johnny was here, and at the time, we, we questioned the boiler systems that were going in, on why there was such a discrepancy between, I guess the first bid was 1.4, the second committed 7.8. We agreed, we agreed at that time, Bill, to go to the people in-
Northeast Harbor.
Northeast Harbor, to do apples-to-apples on those two bids. Have we done that?
I don't, again, I don't have the bid documents to do that with.
Why can't you get your hands on those bids? Because I, I personally have seen the blueprints for the new building.
It would be through Nickerson O'Day. I, I, they bid it, I, they're the contractor.
Okay, so can Chris go to Nickerson O'Day and get a copy of those two bids?
I imagine, I, I don't see why not.
It's all, it's all, the books are all open, that's part of the design-build thing.
And they haven't given you a copy?
No, I don't have a copy.
I mean, and maybe there's something very blatant on why it's different. It could be, I don't know, but that's a big difference. And I don't wanna see us get to the end of this project and say, "Oh, well, we didn't put this into, we still need to add that on." Now, the next question that's out there, are we doing this for the 14th or the 7th of April?
That's totally up to you, I, this, that's a timeline, I don't-
I, I think 14th is what we were doing.
14th, and you guys are fine with that, or, I mean?
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
This is the first time I've heard a date, but-
Yeah, we get that. They had to have a certain amount of time to give public notice, right?
Referendum gives, if you take the referendum portion out of it, it buys us a week, roughly, right?
And we didn't know that at the last meeting, I mean.
Right, we, we had to discuss that with legal.
It'll be at the elementary school.
It won't be a town meeting?
Yes. Well, either way, there's going to be a town meeting, because the referendum just basically, and then it will get voted on from that point, so.
Now, is that a hand vote, or?
Yes.
It's gonna be a hand vote, so people can-
At that day?
It's a special time, yeah. It's a special time, yeah. So it's not gonna be a paper ballot vote, come here and vote?
That was a change from the last meeting that we had.
April 14th?
April 14th. And I don't know, have you guys had any resistance regarding this? Have you, anyone talked to you? Because I know people have talked with me about it.
All that talk to me.
And I don't-
There are no-
And I, I don't, shape or form of giving another 1.5 million for the part. Everyone that I've talked to so far, outside of-
Well, I've heard both, I mean, I've heard both that, that support it, and I've heard people that really wanna know the answers, because at the end of the day, regardless of how we dice it up, we need renovations that need to be done. Bill's right when he says that the original numbers come out in a year and a half later that was obviously gonna be an overrun there. I don't think they were gonna be 1.6 million overrun, based on how the money was spent, but I get it.
No, I'd say that it's a combination of construction costs are going way up and the architect engineers inadequately estimate.
Ah, now that brings up a valid point, Sheridan. Do we have any recourse on the architect's design of this?
No, those were estimated costs at that point in time. I don't know how you're gonna be accountable for estimated costs.
Our attorney said that you're, you're gonna, if they, if you sign anything in AIA contract with, um, with a architect, you're, you're gonna lose that one. It's, it's set out in the AIA.
Okay, so now, at the time that we went to the bond bank for 1.6 million, did they question whether that was going to be enough to build this?
Well, they, the only thing they asked, they said, "Are you sure that's what all you need?" And we, we sure didn't know that's what it was.
Now, the other thing that comes about here is, have we ever determined whether we're going back to the bond bank, going to a local bank for the funding?
My understanding was local bank.
That's what we talked about at the last meeting.
As, as long as we're all on the same page, I don't wanna get to the 14th and determine, well, we gotta go back to the bond bank. We've cleared this with legal, that we can borrow additional funds above and beyond the bond.
Up to a certain point, but we don't, can't exceed.
Yeah, but we don't have to take it all, either.
Right, that's, that's the benefit of going up, is they can-
It's almost like a line.
Right, exactly.
That, that was the discussion, was the line of credit vision.
So I, I mean, I know we're, we're coming to the tail end of this, whether it's going to happen or not. It's, believe it or not, April's not too far away. But I would like to have some better communication between the two boards on the funds that are being expended on this project, just because I don't wanna get to September and find out that we need more money.
Would it be possible to have one of the councilmen come as a liaison to our board meeting? I mean, that would be, that's where one of the-
Or two.
Or two, well, yeah, one or two.
I mean, because, because, Bill, Bill does present that information.
Steve usually goes, and everything-
Yeah, I'm just saying.
And it's just, hasn't gotten that far.
I think we can put together that. Have we had audited numbers on what's been spent down there so far, based on the two bonds on it?
No.
No? Can someone get those numbers? Preliminary numbers, not audited.
Oh, I'm sure, that, obviously, they booked into the, the program.
We've completed, what, 1.5 or 1.6?
Yes, yes, yes.
Which will give us the, from what I'm understanding, will get us the slab, get us a shell, get us a roof.
Right.
A shell.
Correct, the shell, the slab, the roof, and the in, whatever plumbing.
And you bought the kitchen-
And the kitchen slab.
So the, the stubbed-out plumbing will be in there?
So, just so that we can keep moving forward and try not to delay the overall timeframe of the project.
The process was, was a concern, that if we delayed the overall process, those contractors that are already placed in bids are gonna ba, bow out and are gonna be looking for higher-cost bids.
Now, could you, if the 14th, and they wrote it down, can we make this a functional cafeteria?
We'll, we'll have to, it just might take some time.
Right, but it's dual.
You'll have, you'll have kitchen equipment, you'll have outside walls, you won't have any inside walls or anything.
Well, you won't have a heating system, that's the air handling system.
Yeah, but will you have the baseboard?
Yeah.
It's air handled.
Are you talking about functional within a, a month or two?
No, 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 no. I mean, if, we'll just say, if come the 14th, you had to regroup, can this be a functioning building within a timeframe? Obviously, you're gonna have to redesign or figure something out on how we're gonna get to that point. That's where, you had a 60-40 vote last time.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that we can stress that this isn't going to be just a school cafeteria, this is gonna have a public access, this is gonna be a public forum for the town to be able to utilize for whatever functions, you know, it's gonna be a beautiful facility, not just for the school, it's for the town. And I think we can try to stress that, hopefully, you know, that'll help. All I'm saying is, this is not just for the school, this is not just for the students.
It's basically designed as a, as an addition to the school, but separated with its own entrance and, and exit points.
A function center for the townspeople as well. But all we can do is let's, hopefully, keep our fingers crossed, pull it past, if it doesn't, we'll have to go back and do the best we can and, and make it work, in overtime.
And at the end of the day, guys, as I've said to both these boards, it's gonna be a total embarrassment for the town of Bealeville, for the school board, for the town council, for the residents, if we look down there and see one and a half million dollars, shells sitting there and nothing going on. And so, I don't think anybody is happy with what's gone on in the past, but that is the past, and here we are. And so, I can tell you that I'm gonna be a yes-fote, even though I hate spending money, but we need to do it. I don't think it's gonna be cheaper if we put this off. And, uh, so, I'm gonna do everything I can just to let people know, and I'm one voice, I'm one, one person, and we all have family and friends.
Well, that, and that's, that's where I'm stressing, 60-40 vote really is not a big split. That vote could've went either way.
Yes.
And that's the same way this one can go, you know, so.
And this one is attend, people attending.
Well, you've got their attention now.
Yeah.
No, attending.
Oh, yeah.
Attending the meeting. If they don't attend the meeting, they don't get to vote, they can't vote, right? But they can complain all they want, but there's no vote, they didn't vote.
But I mean, I think, I think you might see an outcome to this one. I mean, I think this will be a town meeting that, that you get a few people at.
We'll do the best we can and try to spread the word, say, you know, like I said, I think if you try to just tell people, you know, "Look, that school hasn't really had any major renovations, it's a 50-year-old school, it hasn't, you know, we haven't really touched it 50 years, it needs some work, we need to spend the money, it's, I know it's a little bit more money, but we've got to spend the money now, because, like I said, it would be a complete embarrassment to have that cafeteria useless, and just to, you know, and spend all the money and say, "Well, we know, you know, we spent 5 million dollars, but we couldn't come up with another 1.2 to finish it," you know?
So is it fair to say that if we would've voted a new school, that we would've spent close to 20 million?
Easily.
Or more?
Or more.
More. And they are at 12.
For the numbers we've gotten from that architect company, every number that they've given us, and this is just me speaking my opinion, they've been just a little 50 percent of what it cost us.
Sorry, I have to go. Okay. Basketball coach. All right, see you.
All right, thank you.
Got kids waiting for me. Got kids waiting for me.
Take care.
Yeah.
So, Bill, we're working, the, the next phase, part of the phase is the summer is the boiler system, correct? And that'll be done for fall?
Be about fifty percent done for fall, and what rest of it will not be finished in the next summer. If they can't do it in one summer, not with all the piping that they have to park.
So, we'll have heating in the school, just on the cafeteria?
Correct.
Is that pretty much what this is?
Yeah. You won't have heat unless we're doing some projects. I think nearly didn't. Project for the cafeteria.
Bill, I'm just saying, we're gonna start the boiler process this summer.
Correct.
By fall, we should have the, in the school itself.
No, I'm not talking cafeteria.
Well, how, part of the school will be renovated, so it will be.
They could use those suns.
But you'll have the entire pod.
And then, and this additional money, uh, for the two point eight, we'll bring it, we'll, that will put in the air handling and everything else.
Oh, for the cafeteria.
If we were worried that when we got it all put together, then, oh, the air handler too.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, good.
I, I was hoping Carl would make it. He indicated it, he might make it, but he was confused over five thirty and five, and I messaged him early. Carl Ward?
Hi, Carl.
How are you?
They may have some questions for you, uh, just about done, anyway, Carl.
My name is Tenda. We can let you on. Just got in from, uh, the guest, I forget, I mean, uh, anger, I forgot, I stopped by the job, see how it was looking, so. I have no idea why Bill wanted me here today, by the way, so, uh, you guys got to jump on me.
Well, one of the biggest questions that has surfaced since we determined how the monies were being spent was, when did we know that this project, outside of the renovations, was gonna cost more than one point six million?
Uh, well, I can tell you when I knew. Um, we did, uh, when we interviewed for the project, one of the things we recommended that, it was that we do multiple levels of estimates. Um, we, uh, sometimes we're right in the very beginning stages, so we'll do a conceptual estimate. That had already been done, apparently. The architect had done some conceptual estimate. We didn't have any of that information. So then, the next level of estimating is what we call in the trades, a design development estimate. And that's usually done at fifty, sixty percent design completion. We did that back in September. We were told that the priorities, uh, were, we wanted to do a cafeteria addition, we were calling it at the time, and we also were very interested in, mechanical upgrades, upgrading all the heating systems in the classrooms. There were a number of other estimates that were done as well, um, to varying degrees of accuracy.
When was this?
This is in September of last year.
Nineteen?
Nineteen, yeah. And, um, one of them was to upgrade, I'm sorry, upgrade our, the bathrooms, boys' and girls' rooms on that wing. Uh, I think there was another one to do some site work, site drainage outside, very minor. Another one was to expand and modify the existing boiler. And then there was one, we didn't have a lot of plans on this one, but there was one to, uh, change a bunch of windows and replace a bunch of siding, and some of it's in really rough shape on the outside of the school. So, we provided, uh, a whole array of prices in about a five or six page proposal. My contract's with the school, so my contact is superintendent. So, it went to him. Uh, at that time, the two pieces that we were most interested in, which was the base bid and the mechanical, uh, upgrades in the classrooms came to three point nine million. Um, that, we did another estimate, so we handed it to him, we didn't hear anything. Like normally, if the project sounds like it's over budget, or we got a problem with the budget, we're asked to, uh, do what's known as value engineering, that's what we call it in the trades anyways, and we try to look for ways to cut costs out of the project. It can come a lot of ways. The fastest way is to just cut stuff out of the project, just not build it. But, well, that's not really value engineering. Value engineering is saying, well, why don't we change that siding to something else and maybe we'll save some money. Um, we didn't do any of that. We asked if we needed to do any, and the indication we got was, we were good to go, uh, at least on those two. So, we got the final estimate, uh, plans together, um, late November, I think it was. It was a little bit behind when we, when we thought we'd get it. We launched into an estimate in early December. I think we wrapped that up a little after Christmas, it was right on the holidays. And that base bid and that alternate one for the mechanical upgrades, which was three point nine million, came in this time at three point eight million. It actually went down in price, a hundred thousand. We didn't price up the window and siding upgrade. Uh, Craig had said, maybe we might do that ourselves, or Bill had said we might do that ourselves, but, but we're talking again about it, and if we can give you a number that works, then, then great, we'd love to have it work, since we're right here. We also gave, uh, a revised price on the bathroom upgrades, the boiler upgrades, and that little bit of site work drainage. It's only about twenty thousand dollars with the work on the other side of the school. I think that was everything we gave at that time. So, when we, uh, we, the indication we had initially when we presented that was, from the meeting, was that it, the, the money had shifted, like the mechanical upgrades price came way down, but the cafet- we might say way, uh, dropped about three hundred thousand, I think it was. The cafeteria price went up a little bit, but overall, that piece of the work that we were uh, seemed like most interested in actually came down. And that, by the way, is not usually the case. Usually, when we get the final design, the cost goes up a little bit, because the owner figures out some things they wanted to have, or the architect realizes, oh, I've got some code violations, or, you know, there's things that need to be, and there's just more detail. The subcontractors get more detail, and so their price just sort of creeps up a little bit, but we had carried a fairly reasonable contingency at the design development level back in, um, September, and when we went to the final price, we cut that way back. And that absorbed any of the cost increases, so the price actually came down a hundred thousand. So, uh, what's happened since then is, um, I think there was a lot of confusion in my part, I'm just giving my perspective, because I wasn't there when the bond issue language was put in front of the voters, but I, I know about writing that kind of language and sticking with the words, because I served several terms in the legislature. I know that words mean stuff, and, uh, people can, can really hang you on, on some words. And from what I understand, uh, the way that the measure was put in front of the voters here in Baileyville was, it was a limit on the amount of money that could be spent on the cafeteria addition, and then there was an overall total package. Um, it's too bad that that limit was put on there, because it certainly limits your flexibility in managing it, but you're stuck with this situation. I'm assuming you sought legal counsel on that, and they've echoed your sentiments, so that was smart. Um, what I'm trying to do, I'm, I'm not a politician anymore, uh, although people say I still sound like one sometimes, but I'm just a builder, and my advice, or my, uh, job is to try to get the town of Baileyville as much product built for the money that you have. So what we recommended to, uh, Bill is, well, let's consider, if you want to, getting, getting started with something, because, uh, what we were worried about is, is, uh, if we waited until the spring, or waited till later, uh, we'd lose some of the subcontractors. One of the problems we typically have in Downey's main, we're doing a couple jobs over in Machias, uh, is not everybody from Lewiston and Auburn and Portland, especially now, wanna come up to Baileyville. They've got plenty of work right in their backyards. So soliciting and getting subcontractors to price certain trades has been more difficult. I'm from Millinocket. We're doing the Millinocket Library up there right now, renovating it, a type of project our company built in nineteen sixty-three, by the way. We're renovating it, and we've had the same problem there. Up in the county, we had the same problem. So we recommended to Bill that we get started with a limited scope, foundations, shell, roof, um, hence the site work, part of the site work piece that goes along, not all of the site work, which we're doing with Bill Delmonico at DeSenzos, uh, just that much of it. Um, and we get started with that. And then, just before New Year's, we found out, and that was about nine hundred and seventy-five thousand was the initial contract, well within the one point five or one point six million we're limited to. And then, uh, we found out, right around Christmas, from our kitchen supply folks, that if we ordered the kitchen equipment after January first, there's gonna be an eleven thousand dollar increase in price. So I put that in front of Bill. I said, for two hundred and twenty-three thousand, we can buy the kitchen equipment package now and save the town eleven thousand. I thought he made a smart move, and he added that to our contract. And, and that's where it sat for, I don't know, a couple of months. And then, just recently, as this all came out, where we're limited with the amount of money we can spend on the, on the cafeteria, but we've got other monies that can be spent on either the elementary school, or the, I guess Bill's already spent some money on, nothing we had anything to do with it, some windows and roofing work over there. I, I made the suggestion, well, you know you wanna do the mechanical upgrades. And we, what we did was, we had a really high overall price for the mechanicals, or for the cafeteria and for the mechanical upgrades. And I, I went to both of those mechanical bidders, and I said, would you be willing to do just part of it? Because one of the guys was really low on one part, the other guy was really low on the other. And we saved, I think, it was right around half a million dollars overall for that, and that was a good move. I'm really happy that both Johnson and Jordan and Androck slash, um, Gatcom, uh, I saw Sheridan Smith tearing out here in his truck a little while ago, so, but he, he was really good to work with on that, and, um, so we split the mechanical up to save the town a bunch of money. We put that in front of Bill, and he said, yes, I can go with the mechanical upgrades, uh, and we did that, and the bathroom upgrades. And that way, we hung on to those prices. And that's where we stand right now. I don't know how much of other monies are available, it's none of my business. But, um, I have explained to Bill that, right now, we're on hold. We're, we've already budgeted and bought out everything internally at my company that we can. Uh, we locked those prices in before we lost them. Um, my understanding is, you have to put a me- another measure of some sort in front of the voters. You're restricted on when you can do that. Hopefully, you can do it quickly, because, just to let you know, uh, we're hearing from a number of the folks whose prices we used in the estimate we did in December, and there, there's two things. They're picking up a ton of work, and they're saying that this goes on much longer, they won't have the horses to do it this summer, and they're gonna have to walk away from the price they gave us in December, and that's understandable. Uh, and they're asking me for guarantees that we've got a project. And I'm just telling them, well, I'm gonna go up to what I hope is a friendly meeting next Tuesday with the town council, and, and I, maybe I'll know more about exactly what's happening. And then I got another call today from another sub, and I stopped by the, the job site, and DeSenzos was there, and he said the same thing today. He said, I've got to find work for my guys, and if we, if we're going to build the remainder of this project, because we've only given part of this contract, then I'll stay, and I won't bid other work, but, you know, if you don't know, tell me you don't know, and I'll go look for other work, and if I get other work, then I won't be able to finish this job. And that means I'm gonna have to go out and find other bidders in these trades, and the prices aren't gonna go down, guys.
Definitely not.
So, there is some urgency to this. My job is to tell you all the facts as I know them, so you can make a good decision, and I'll probably done that.
Well, April fourteenth is gonna be the telltale sign.
Yeah.
That's the best that we can tell you on that. But let's go back to the mechanical side of this. When you say you've, you've got two bids that come in, roughly five hundred thousand dollars apart, what changed in those two bids? And two, does that bid include a boiler system for the old school?
Um, the boiler sys- the actual boiler upgrades, from what I understand, is, was a separate bid item that's not yet been added to our contract. So I don't believe that's in there now. I think all we have is from there out to the mechanical, but I can check on that.
To, to the?
Out to the classrooms.
Out to the classroom, not, nothing to do with the old system.
But you should let me check on that, and be a hundred percent sure. I used to be, for fifteen years, the chief estimator at Nicholson and O'Day, but I'm not anymore. I'm just the CEO. And so, uh, which means I work for everybody else.
You're right. And what I can read, that is all the piping leaving, removing all the steam.
Right.
New lines to boilers stay.
Yeah. The boilers, the boiler upgrade is, it wasn't relative to all the other prices we did, but it was one of the smallest prices. I think it was, you gotta help me on this one. I didn't bring any information, it's like thirty or forty thousand dollars or something like that.
For?
For, uh, the expansion and the retrofit of the boilers.
I don't even know that.
They were still.
If you want me to, I can certainly check on that.
I would like to get some clarification on that.
To answer your question about why the price switches, uh, I don't know. Um, I was very, very suspicious, because, uh, we had priced it at the, at the design development level in September with Gatcom. They were the only bid that we got. And, uh, and their price dramatically changed, and, and their price for the, their price, we're lucky we got a price from Johnson and Jordan, because Gatcom's price for the retrofit of the mechanical systems went way, way up. And so, we had approached, uh, thirty-three mechanical bidders, we got two bids. And, um, we, uh, asked them if, uh, if Johnson and Jordan, if they would price it too, and their number came so much lower, and it was back down where Gatcom had priced up the, that work originally. Gatcom's price went up, but Johnson and Jordan was back down there. I don't know if they said Gatcom doesn't want the work. You know, they're not a big company, and in fact, to, to have them do even just the cafeteria addition, he had to, he had to team up with Sheridan to get it done. So I think maybe he realized he didn't have the people this summer, and who see that affect prices. But the good news is, is that my estimator has met twice with the folks from Johnson and Jordan, literally rolled out each page of the plan, and said, you have this, you have that fixture, you have that pipe, you have this heater, and went right down through every wing and every classroom, and he's one hundred percent convinced that they have the entire job. And we're glad we got that second price, because it was in the hundreds of, as close to half a million dollars saving now. Yeah, we would've been deep due to them.
Yeah. I've, I've, I've had in the past kids come in as much as three hundred percent, or whoever else.
Yeah. I don't know if it's, you know, I know how we estimate. We count every two by four when we estimate, but everybody has a different style and a different approach, and uh, I'm not a mechanical engineer, I'm a civil engineer.
If he really wants the work, it'll be competitive. If he's just throwing it out there, he's gonna make a ton of money.
Bill, do you know in renovations to the elementary school, and what we've done so far in the high school, a rough guesstimate of what we spent out of the three point four million?
Up through December, it was in this. I'm trying to think if, on the elementary school, nothing else has been done. On the high school, I signed for an additional. It's not me.
Is that my phone?
Sorry.
Last, the last one, what was the addition to it? One?
Uh, this latest change order?
With the boiler.
I know the contract amount, Bill, is around two point four million total, so.
So we signed for another million, so there's about one point one left, more or less.
Out of the three point four.
Uh, double check? Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yes. And I signed for up to one point five, and a cafeteria, the one six.
One six.
I'm trying to leave myself.
Yeah.
Some engineering costs and some additional costs.
What I suggested to Craig is that we figure out these windows, the window siding, from kind of on our own.
Yeah.
And not to take money away from our friends, the designers, hope they're not here in the back, throw an apple at me, but, um, you know, renovation design cost is ten to fifteen percent of the cost of construction, that this is a three hundred, four thousand dollar siding job, you've, you've paid thirty, forty thousand, and none of it went into the siding of the windows, so we can figure that out. The only thing I ask, Craig, is that if, if we're doing it, that, you know, you make sure it's apples to apples or anything else, because usually, we don't competitively bid when there aren't plans, but we're making exception for you.
I mean, in all reality, uh, I wouldn't think we'd be specific plans to replace the windows where they're sitting with the same size of the siding. And we've got some questioning as to what might be behind it, but, um, given some further investigation, we're pretty sure now exactly what's behind it. And it isn't as bad as we previously maybe thought, so.
Biggest thing you gotta worry about is asbestos, or maybe a layer of siding finished material underneath somewhere, I've seen that before, and mold, it'll come up with the, the walls.
I think after doing some investigation, then we should be better off than we thought we were.
So, looking at this addition, and the renovations, heating wise, mechanical wise, and throwing in the siding and windows, based on the budget, and we'll just say that this approves, that we're gonna have, and we get the one point six million additional fund, does this complete this project?
Um, I, I have to add up the numbers again. Bill may know better than me.
We're at one, we're at one five, and we're talking about one six. Last estimate we had was two eight eight five, I believe.
Yeah, if, well, you.
Three point one puts me over the two point eight eight five.
If you write these numbers down, then you can add them, so I won't have to add them and back up my calculus. back up my calendar here, but, I, we're at, we're gonna be at about two point eight five on the cafeteria when it's fully funded. Uh, the mechanical upgrades, Bill, it's seven sixty, something like that, so point seven six million on that. The bathroom upgrades, we might as well call it two hundred thousand, point two. Um, the, what do you think? Um, if we were guessing, what do you think, Craig, you got a guess on, on this window and siding scope or the?
We had thrown in four hundred thousand, I believe, but we are not going to spend that because that number is outrageous compared to what...
It's two hundred and fifty, I mean, to put a number in here.
Uh, I would say two hundred and fifty, we won't spend that.
And then on top of that is information I don't have, which is what Bill's already spent over the elementary school. And all that leaves out, well, it does leave out the boiler upgrades, that's forty thousand, so twenty, oh, four million. And then, uh, and then you have to decide on whether or not we want to do that little bit of site work upgrade up front, because that was only about twenty thousand, so it was really not much money, maybe thirty.
Where's, where's the site work up front?
Like, that library and roo- where room, yeah.
Oh, down there, yeah, okay.
Now, um, what have we spent at the elementary school? I know we put a roof on there, we put windows on, we put a boiler...
That's a bad, yeah, the controls.
And the controls.
Uh, let's see, uh, do, 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 elementary grounds upgrades, twenty-four. Elementary roof was two oh three, four, four, eight. High school roof was three, six, nine. And windows was one, five, seven, uh, excuse me, elementary roof was not what I said, that was, high school roof was three, three, nine. Heating was two oh three, so that's five, seventy-two, six, uh, seven, thirty-seven, eight, nine, million one.
So one point, alright. Now...
I would've guessed a million one, but I'm a lot closer by adding into my head.
Based on what is left on the to-do list that Nick O'Day is not involved in, we put the windows in, what is left to be done in old schools that have not been done yet?
The window siding, some lights.
Which I'd seen here.
Yeah.
Lights aren't done.
Lights aren't done.
We have that, we have the exterior work at the library side that is, was on our list, low on the priority list.
But it's, it's there.
But it was on there.
Okay.
Anything else would be extra, I guess, at this point.
I think that was it. Other than the siding, that we were looking at siding and windows.
I can't think of anything right now. The one question I do have on the cafeteria side, the sewer from the building down the road, is that part of?
No, that's not in there.
That's gonna, that's separate.
Yeah, I, my understanding was, is that you guys had asked Jamie, my project manager, for a price, he'd approached D'Amico, but, uh, the pricing was too high, right? So you're gonna, we're gonna look at other means.
That is gonna be, that is gonna be a separate, that won't be included either. So that's separate.
But that should save us some pumps and some other things that were originally in...
Right. So now, on the boiler, rest of the work, again, this is a guesstimate, what is that going to cost roughly? And I know we're not holding you to any numbers here, but...
Well, we actually estimated, that's the item we estimated, right? The boiler upgrades themselves. That's the forty thousand I told you about a few minutes ago. So I think you have that one.
Yeah, so...
That's just putting on, adding on the small boiler upgrade.
One, two, fifty for the, you can put the bathroom side, the boiler upgrade.
Good enough, or... Or the water, is it a good placement?
Yes, two thousand. Two thousand. You're talking about less than twenty, or about twenty...
Yeah, we're showing, there's only, uh, two point three five in the, without the lights, the exterior work by the library and the, uh...
Yeah, but that, you didn't have the two point eight in there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're that close.
Close.
So you, you are going to be within, in addition to what needs to happen, somewhere around one point five million is gonna cover all your costs?
Yeah. The other thing to point out too, and I don't wanna get your hopes up, but Bill wisely asked us to, um, negotiate with him what's known as a guaranteed maximum price, time and materials contract. And so these prices are only an upper limit, to the extent that we can find ways to just shave a little bit of money off, if we can. Um, we've, we're probably eighty percent, eighty-five percent done with the foundations right now. And I don't have last week's labor in there, but our superintendent's done a very good job of, uh, putting some, well, I think they're calling it Carl Ward Concrete Pump Service, but, uh, but we're not running concrete pumps at fifteen hundred dollars per mobilization and I think he saved about five of those. And the labor seems to be going really well, Craig.
He cut down his staff.
He's the best superintendent I've got in the company in terms of beating labor budgets. So, now, there's a lot more labor to count, the wood framing, this thing is designed like a bomb shelter, it really will. You'll have a typhoon hit Baileyville, that'll be the last building you'll be standing, is that cafeteria. And, uh, that's gonna heat up a lot of labor, but it's, as long as we hold the subs, as long as we don't lose any of the subs, that's my big fear, especially a big one, you know, electrician, mechanical, site work, um, you know, we can self-perform a lot of things too. If we need to, we can lay tile, we can, we can, uh, put in the drywall and put up the ceilings if we have to, if nobody will come out. So, uh, I'm, I'm pretty optimistic, but once we get the roof on and the slab down and we get everything bought out, we get signed subcontract, so we, we sign a subcontract with everybody, we don't leave it to chance, we lock them in. And once that's done, I'm gonna be able to start giving Bill probably June or July, probably July, some real solid reports about where we are cost-wise and if we're projecting under. If your foundations and slab are done and we've under run the budget by twenty thousand, that means that twenty thousand, at least from that line item, will carry all the way through to the end of the job. We don't care, we don't guarantee each line item, we guarantee the bottom line price. So sometimes things run over. Yeah, so, so misconception people have a lot of.
Oh, yeah, I liked it.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm optimistic and I think we'll probably, typically we come in about one to three or four percent under, if you really watch things closely.
Do you, do you think April fourteenth, when we're gonna have the final answer, is gonna be soon enough to be able to hold on to those people?
I can twist some arms. Who are the three people that I can try? I mean, they...
I know, you can only try and...
Well, and...
Bill is a local boy, he'll...
Yeah, yeah, I, I, Billy hired me to work for him in nineteen eighty-six, first hire in University of Maine, yeah. I was a couple of years out and he hired me over in East Manchayas and I worked in the way for Board Millarpie when they were expanding. So, uh, he and I have been good friends since then, we've always stayed in touch. I'm sure he'll come around, but the thing is, is if I tell him to hang on, hang on, hang on, we have to, we have to do something, you know?
Just, I mean, I did up some quick math here and it's, it's roughly one point three million, based on what monies were taken out and what monies are gonna be spent. Do you find that, I know we've had, um, construction costs have gone up, I guess, but do you find that to be extremely high?
One point three for what portion?
Overall, on all the projects.
Oh, so the original budgets that you were working with from the architect compared to now? So you went from about four to five point three?
Uh, we went from five to about six point three, that's all I've said.
I've seen budgets that are up ten, I've seen budgets that were up seventy.
This one's up pretty...
It's crazy right now. And I, I do think that, uh, if, I heard some talk that the budgets that were produced for you a year ago, a year and a half ago, when you were going to get the money, uh, were somewhat done on, on a square foot basis. And I can tell you this, and this is somebody, uh, I, I was chief estimator for a forty million dollar a year construction company for fifteen years, there's no way in heck I ever would've squared footed that building, because it's so unique and compressed. You are doing a lot of things inside of a very small footprint. Um, the thing that you should know about this, and you can, you could put this in the paper if you want.
Is he here?
It's being reported.
That's being reported, I know, I've watched a few of them, so, uh, is, uh, the school, when you walk around, I come from East Monocle, I'm still, Garrett State High School is still up there, built nineteen fifty-seven. And the school's been well maintained, uh, with very limited funds, you've done the best that you could. And, and I know that money's tight, might be a little bit better now because jobs are up here, but, um, it's not easy to do. And the, the way, you've multi-purposed every space that you've got. That gym is the most flexible gym in my little scene, and the way that designed is. And you've definitely done that with this design. And I, and I've got no, no, I'm not trying to, uh, you know, brag up our architect, you've, you're doing a lot of things inside of a little space. And when you really look at it, it's, it's a very efficient use of that space, so you're cramming a lot in. So for a square foot basis, it's going to be very expensive, but you're getting good bang for, for a lot of buck, but you're getting good bang for it. So I think it was smart, you could've built a standalone auditorium, you know, a stage, a standalone kitchen and spent crazy money. And I'm seeing, we just finished a fifty-two million dollar school from the Colmas. And the stuff they've got in there is pretty gold-plated stuff, it's nice. Uh, and, uh, and they've, their school was nineteen sixty-eight, so I think there's parts of this building, maybe right about that age.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. So, you know, uh, you, you, you're going to, it's going to be a really smart use of the money. I just think what's regrettable, and I would love to have had a chance to come in two years ago, whenever you started exploring, and do a conceptual estimate on this, to get some idea, especially the kitchen, because that's what's driving this. Just the kitchen couldn't alone, it's a quarter of a million dollars, so I don't have that. Uh, I don't see anything, uh, we went through value engineering with Bill, we did shave a, a lot out, like a hundred and twenty thousand or so, and that's it. There's, without changing the whole mission of, of what you're doing, that's about all there was. So, it's not like, there's, everything's gold-plated.
Yeah, from the first, the first BD to the last one, we actually shaved about seven hundred thousand, zero three five, and then two eight, two nine.
And, and, look, I don't like seeing public dollars, uh, spent poorly. It was my greatest pet peeve in Augusta for six years, it was to see money just piddled away on stupid stuff. It drove me nuts, that's why I was on the taxation committee and I was the one who was the fist pounder. And I, I don't like high taxes, I'm sure your citizens don't either, but you're making really good use of the tax dollars here. And if I were imploring folks, uh, we've got plenty of work, if this project doesn't get fully built, oh, I'm sure we'll, we'll survive, we've been around for seventy years. But I don't know what the town's gonna do with a half-completed building. And, uh, if I can hold the numbers and I, why don't I get back to, to Bill tomorrow after I twist some arms to make sure we're good to go? I better do it tomorrow, because we've got a bid on Friday, and it's our hands on deck without bidding. And we'll make sure, and the question I'll ask them is, if the town approves on April fifteenth, ironically, tax day, uh, can you hold your price until then? And I'll let you know. And the other thing, Bill, is if, we got a couple of these that were the prices up a little bit and they just say, well, I'm gonna have a three percent increase, nothing I can do about it, I'll look to see if somehow we can absorb that into our current contingency on that, so your GMP doesn't change. I'll try that. So, we'll, we'll work with you the best that we can.
I always appreciate that.
Carl's been good to work with and unfortunately, not the first time I've been able to work with him, unfortunately.
Twenty years ago, so I believe, yeah, Sebastian Cook. So, any other questions for me? Do you need me to hang around in case something comes up or?
No, I think we're all set. Carl, we really appreciate you coming in and sharing the time and thoughts.
The other thing, uh, if you've got pens and a blank piece of paper, could you write down? I'll give you my email address. Uh, it's K Ward, K W A R D, at Nick O'Day, N I C K O D A Y, dot com. And, uh, that rings through my iPad, which I look at about three times a day. Um, and any questions you may have, there was any part of this that afterwards, like, now wait, what did he say? What did that mean? Uh, just send them, it doesn't matter, I don't need to ask you today, so I'll, I'll answer it.
Neither do I.
Yeah. Bill's been good to work with too. Uh, he's, uh, you know, been straightforward and, you know, when I ask him a question, I get, I get a straight-up answer, so, um, it's been good. And I think, we've got a really good superintendent on the job and the quality of the work, I just looked at it and it's really good so far, so, and we've been, we've had a mild winter.
Yes.
And that saved a lot of money, because one of the most ridiculous expenses in building is having enclosed stuff with plastic and then pump LP gas heat into it and it's just, it's just burning up your available funds.
Carol's liking it though.
Yeah.
Look at Timmy over there.
Who's that on the wall there?
I think that's what they say.
All right, well, back to back door, glad to help, please follow up with any questions in right now.
I have to answer them.
Thanks, Carl. No problem.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Is there anything we need to do to try and let people know how and why we need this money and, and try?
Well, it's...
All those things we talked about last time.
It's gotta be positive spin.
Getting out of the crawl line, getting out from all those places.
I mean, it would not hurt to have a story in the advertiser that people can read on the importance of this. You know, when you get more positive, you get out of the, the better results you're gonna have at a town meeting. The problem you've got is, again, sixty, forty, that's why you, every vote's gonna really count in this, because, you know, I would hate to see this go to vote and be shot down, you know, for, you know, thirty or forty votes, it's just foolish.
Right, but it never should've got to this point, Tim. This should've been, this should've been even before the project started. It sounds like people knew about this, but didn't tell the townspeople. Carl said, you know, it's, be glad for the townspeople, whatever, have an empty shell down there, well...
We may.
We may, but that's really, that's the town people's decision. I wish we had known, so that the townspeople could've made a decision to either raise the extra money before there's something started or not. That's, it's, it's ridiculous.
That is the frustrating part of this. Um, and, and what's really frustrating is the amount of money that was spent on legal to get to this point, on why we had to have these questions the way they were and why they had to be worded this way to spend that money the way it should've been spent. And then we're still at the point where, well, we obviously didn't have enough money to begin with, but we're right back to another bond goes out before the citizens to say, can we spend some more money? And that's the, that's very frustrating, I would agree with you.
At some point, they're gonna lose trust in all of us.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why either, either we make a stance to turn this to a positive and try to save face and figure out what went wrong and that it won't happen in the, in the future, or we'll get voted off the island. You know?
I'll choose that.
I mean, it, I, I, this is very frustrating, Steve.
But I think we all went forward with the best interest of the town, the best interest and voted it in what we thought was correct. I don't think any of us voted and did something that we thought right.
No, I don't think that at all, but the fact of the matter is, is that had this not surfaced, we would've spent an additional one point some odd million dollars on projects that we did not have the authority to spend. Now, obviously, it would've come from somewhere to pay these bills, which the, the big pot at the end of the day, you know, our surplus is where it would've come from, we just can't do that, you know?
We don't have that much surplus.
Right.
Hopefully, we look there not too much in the future.
I mean, it's... That's for me, why it has to be very important that we follow what's being spent on this project, because we don't wanna take from surplus. And regardless of how you dice this up, one point one million dollars is going to do to people's taxes...
Five million?
Five million.
If you did, if you had to do it also.
I'd be doing one.
Like, mobile.
No, it'll be over twenty years, hopefully.
Right, but if you, if you take this and you take the normal person that has a fifteen hundred dollar, um, tax bill every year, that's roughly gonna bring them up roughly around two hundred dollars per month now.
Per month?
I mean, per year, right? Roughly?
Yeah, you'd be going up from nineteen to twenty-five, or almost twenty to twenty-five, yeah, you'd be going.
If you do it for a year.
Right, but, but.
If you do it in twenty years, you're talking.
It's about two hundred dollars. Now, you take, for the local person that has a tax bill of a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars, considerable amount of money. Now you start talking about your people that own commercial properties and all large businesses here, that's a substantial amount of money.
Help, help me understand what you said, though, I missed something.
Your tax bill for the course of the year is roughly gonna go up about two hundred dollars.
Based on paying it off in one year?
No.
It'd be higher than that.
So it's over twenty years.
Over twenty years, you're probably, you're probably gonna be looking at.
Twenty dollars.
Ten bucks.
You're probably gonna be looking at, uh, five percent to ten, five to six percent increase. On, on it, so.
So it depends on what you already paid.
That's, that's in addition to whatever else we have, and we know, we know it's gonna cost us more this coming year. We're gonna work.
Well, yeah, but we're just talking about one point one million dollars, the, whatever the taxpayers are getting, one point five million. What that's gonna put people's tax bill, in addition to what we're already spending.
No, that, that's all I was trying to clarify was.
Right.
It's, it's not two hundred dollars, it's.
Well, though, based on the total overall, we're probably looking at around two hundred dollars. Not just on these projects, all the projects, all these projects combined.
All your projects.
Right. Including the school, including the sewer, including the roads and everything that comes into that.
That makes it, because it sounded confusing.
Well, no, I, I wasn't trying to confuse, I'm just saying that the, this.
I was misunderstanding.
Spending this type of money is going to bring up people's taxes. You know, in, with any project, regardless whether it's the school side or town side. And there's a lot of big taxpayers in this town that, you know, their tax bills are gonna go up substantially. A five percent increase on this little bit, okay, that doesn't sound like much, you'll be, other people say it's a gallon of milk. Well, but I don't buy that argument when it comes down to your overall, it's more than a gallon of milk. I think we have to promote this, you guys have got to promote it somehow, some way. And I don't know how you're going to do that. I think Carl's suggestion of, um, you know, the, uh, crawl line, I don't know if you.
Michelle, they do something up on the Facebook page.
So what's the positive short answer that you give to somebody at the post office that asks why we need the money?
One point five million.
The short answer for me, what I've heard tonight, is that the cost of these projects, including the renovations, has gone over by one point five million dollars.
And I, and I, again, I think, like Sheridan was saying earlier, there's been fingers pointed, there's been blame given, and we're past that, we have to move forward now. And I think what Sheridan was saying also, it isn't just the school. It's going to be a facility that's open and available to the community. So if you, together, collectively, say it's not, I mean, yes, it was in the school budget, and that's the error, but it's gonna benefit more than just the school. It's gonna benefit the recreation department, it's gonna benefit any senior group that wants to meet in there. I mean, it's, it's going to have a large impact, not just for the school, but the whole community. So I would like to see my town councilors, you know, who are in favor of it, and my school board members who are in favor, to speak positively, get past the negative, we can't change that, this is where we are, we need to move forward now. And people will then make their mind up, whether they wanna vote for it or they don't. But I think the two boards, and I agree with you, Timmy, there needs to be more communication, and you need to work together and promote it positively. Or otherwise, you're destined for it to fail.
Right, and that's exactly what's going to happen. Based on, if, one, you don't have that short answer like Jamie asked. Two, you can't put out, tell you what the positives of this is going to be, such is what Lori just suggested. And I don't know, I mean, there's many avenues. Somebody said social media, um, you've got the radio, you know? Anything that, I mean, that can get people out to understand the side of the importance of the building is gonna be a benefit to the people that voted for it. If you just leave it up to the sixty, forty that voted last time, and we don't do anything about it, you know? I know what Vegas odds I take on that, so.
So with this referendum going on on the fourteenth, would it be fair to say, and be proper, to have Bill come in, speak before everybody votes? Like a whole big, like a, you know, question and answer session before?
We've gotta have our public hearing.
Public hearing anyways. So, that would be before the fourteenth, correct?
That's those questions.
So those questions should be answered, so we should get that out there ASAP, make sure people are aware, and maybe have it at the schools, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the more people you get out to a public hearing, the more people you potentially can have to come and vote.
This isn't a referendum.
Bill gets up and presents this to, what's that?
It's not a referendum, it's just a special town council meeting.
Right. No referendum, no, but we still have the, the public hearing to get to that point. And Bill gets up and speaks in front of him, answers the questions that need to be answered by the people that have them, then potentially you've, may have turned the negative vote into a positive.
Should we be fair to say that we get him back again for that?
I was gonna say, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to have him there.
Before this night's meeting, before him, what he had to say. Totally, I, I, I was all, totally opposite of any information that I was aware of, until he spoke up.
So he would be a good.
Carl's been a long coming out to meet with anybody at any time, he's made it very clear.
So hopefully, as your project's moving forward, we'll have some, a little more oversight.
I'd, I'd like to see, um, on, whether it's the town or the school side, that when we have major projects, such as this sewer project, I don't think we had a hiccup in an overrun, Jamie, you can help me with this, on the sewer project to speak of.
Or the water project.
Or the water, or the water project. And, and this really, zero, I mean, Nixon O'Day is really in your favor, you know? I mean, I've heard, like you said, the finger point, this isn't anything to do with Nixon O'Day. They're the ones that just, here's what it's gonna cost you people, sorry. It's the way it is, so. But yes, I think we, in the future, can have some better control and communication. I, we, we always say we're gonna have better communication with the school board, and we basically need maybe once a year, twice a year, and that's it. You know, it's basically a budget, though.
I think every three months would be it, just, we should make that a normal thing.
Right.
Every three months, what's going on here, what's going here, what can we help you with, what can you help us with?
You guys, take it to your board, and see if you're willing to do that. I think consensus here would say that we would be more than willing to meet, regardless of whether it's here or at the library, wherever.
Don't matter where it's at.
At least we know what's coming, you know, I mean, there's a lot of things on the town side that are coming that are gonna seem like, oh my god, the town's spending a lot of money again. But real, realistically, we're not, it's really coming out of the TIF dollars, so. That, that's gonna take promoting from us to show the people that the TIF dollars that have been saved over the course of the past years are being sent to a, a project that's gonna, I think, make this town better, or at least look better, that's for sure. But that, those will be coming up in the not-too-just-the-future.
Oh, that is a secret.
Well, it's on there, it's, it's, it's the main street, it's the main street problem.
Oh, the main street project?
Right. But, there's a lot of details that need to be answered on it, but. That's basically redoing the entire main street from Route One to the junction.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
I was aware of that last year.
I was just at my mom's last night, dropping some stuff off, and I came on, and then on the end of D Street, that little pink house it has that someone was living in the garage. The back end of that has completely caved in.
Caved in.
And I'm just thinking that that's a hazard, I, I guess I hadn't really looked at it before, and I'm like, ooh, that's not good. It's a danger, since someone was living in the garage?
Still is.
Still is.
What?
I, you didn't say that.
That's on your guys' resume.
Yeah, you didn't say that, dude.
Also, we appreciate you guys meeting with us, Bill, thank you. Um, you know, I think from here until the fourteenth, I think any communication that we can share with each other, whether it's in passing, calling, emailing, whatever, I think will do us all justice, and, you know, we'll see where the fourteenth brings us. I think, do you have when the public hearing will take place?
At this point, no.
But you should have it within next week?
I'll have it this week. The other thing is, if either Bill or the school board can help with something they'd like to put on the crawl line for the TV station, so that we can start getting out there. Once I have it, have the date, you guys can go to town with that, and we also should probably get a newspaper up to talk about that.
Carl, can you, Jamie, please put something together? For the crawl line? That would be a positive, I think if the kids presented it, I mean, that would be my, I mean.
Bring it all down, so you can get at least a rendering of the building, too.
I just wanted on camera right now, we gotta thank his GMG crew, ladies, to start this trip to DC. That was understanding. Saw that last night, it's a big B moment.
Hey, wait a minute, I said from the beginning.
I'm gonna be in front of you guys next Tuesday, to make sure.
Ask them for money?
No, the money's covered. That's an all-expense-paid trip, the Bank of Maine covers our flight, our hotel, everything.
As long as coronavirus isn't.
The things they're talking about, this not traveling, that's a whole difference.
Yeah, I know. I've already warned the kids, right after that, the weekend of April break. So it's the first few days we'd be coming back from break.
No, I mean, it's, too bad if it was down, if it was down the road, you'd have more answers.
Now, you, you may see some of those dates changed, too, depending on how it gets and what happens. There's, there's an awful lot of pressure out there to change some things around at this point.
Anything that's gonna be positive, if we get our kids out to those experiences, it's not positive.
In Germany, as of today, anything, any event that has a thousand-plus people attending, nobody attends. They cancel the event.
Well, you've already seen some cancellation in this country, too.
Harvard's already, kids, go home, don't come back till the end of the year.
And they have schools that are actually shutting down, too.
Harvard, they're sending the kids home and having them do it online. Graduation.
The parade, at the same time.
Well, again, thank you so much for taking your time and meeting with us, and we'll continue on with our next boarder here.
I'm gonna get her done.
But I gotta come in.
Not gonna do it. It's a no.
Five students, teachers. No, they're that far. Funny, someone. I'm tired right now, I said Lori Kromen's got a transfusion.
That side.
The book I said she was there when I started. He said, I gotta give her the chance.
That's right, babe, I'll be there. See you later.
I'll instantly.
All right, we will move on to our approval of the warrants, Carl.
Make a motion that we approve the following warrants. Warrant seventy-eight in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred, one dollars and seventy cents. Warrant seventy-nine in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Warrant eighty in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and nineteen cents. Warrant eighty-one in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents. And warrant eighty-two in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents.
That's a two's in there.
I second that.
It's been moved second to approve as warrant seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, and eighty-two is presented, all in favor. That's a vote. And approval of our minutes. So, let's see, we got, yeah, so Carl, you were not, or, uh, Steve, you were not here at the last meeting?
True. Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting from February twenty-fifth.
Second. To move second to approve our minutes of our regular council meeting of February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, all in favor. That's a vote. Next is our department head reports, fuel usage was in there. Chart. So you're saving this fuel usage chart to where you can make it next year that we can see the comparisons? All right, Public Works, Jamie, how's things going?
Good.
Had the street sweep run up today?
I have a tendency to force speeds, running sometimes.
Also, Public Works is busy all day yesterday, from daylight till dark, vote, helping us down the school with a minor issue we had, so a big thanks to them again, they're always there.
Um, the one thing I was gonna ask you, Jamie, and I can do it right now, so kill two birds, is at the end of, actually both Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue, the pothole, is there something we can put in there that's gonna last for more than a day?
Uh, no, but we are, we will keep on talking about it. We actually had, um, coal patch warming up all weekend in the, uh, in the garage, in the loader bucket, and we were gonna do that guest day, and then somebody called me, and I spent all day with them. But we did start out today, and did a bunch of coal patching, but I had Gary sweeping the avenues. And I didn't want them to put the coal patch down until the avenues were swept. So I've got coal patch in the loader bucket tonight, and that'll be done in the morning.
Cause that is quite a hole at the end of Third Avenue.
Yeah, actually, right across from Tamrose was probably the worst one I've seen in a long time, we, we got that first, but.
On the one.
On the lower, lower Second Avenue side. While we were down there working today, there's like, wow, I can't believe somebody's called on that, but. We are working on it, um, everything on the, it's detailed, I won't bore you with it, but I made sure that every intersection on Main Street is part of the project going up into the intersections. It's gonna take care of all those spots.
Smart thinking. Transfer station, you see they're out, and that your metal processed at least, so.
He apologized profusely about taking so long, and, and I told him that I know every time I call him, it's gonna be four or five months before it's done, he kinda chuckled and then agreed, and, and, uh, so they, they do have it almost done, and we'll get it cleaned up and start over again.
I'll have some disappointed people that's coming Saturday.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Okay, moving on to the public library, Silver, how are you?
Good.
Everything's going good down there?
Yes, it is.
We've got four windows ordered, they're gonna be installed. Their windows are probably forty, fifty years old, the old string type that held all the weights, that are all broken anyway, but, um, but that will save us a lot if we need to be built.
Have you had any issues anymore with people throwing garbage out?
I only noticed once about three weeks ago that somebody had been in and had some snacks and drinks and left their.
And I, I cleaned up the yard the other day.
Would it make sense if we could put a garbage can down there, I mean, when do you think they'd use it?
Well, they don't use the basketball courts, I can picture them using it down there.
All right, so could we put a sign that says camera in use, that says.
I think there's one down there, isn't there?
You're being videotaped, throwing your garbage out.
There's no camera in use? Turns out it's all just.
Yeah, the only, the only sign that there is a snow up through.
Is it possible to shut the wifi off when the library's not open?
It does, doesn't it? No.
I don't think so, because.
That's why, that's why everybody sits down there, because it's free wifi. I deal with, I have to have a move in the middle of a snowstorm, because I park down there at two o'clock in the morning.
Danny had it on a timer, and I think it shut off at ten at night.
Shut off earlier.
Yeah.
Shut it off, have a timer set up, so it shuts off when.
The library's closed.
Yeah, the library's closed, mine's simple.
I've actually.
defeat that part.
Saw one guy use on the outside spigot to fill up water jugs, so.
Well, that's, aren't we nice, charitable people.
Say, just get it from the school crate next to it.
I'm not gonna tell you where he was from.
We have good water.
Free deals.
All right.
So would it be a good idea to put signs up saying you're being videotaped?
I, I don't see a problem with it.
It'd be a good idea to have a camera.
Yeah.
And they're not that expensive.
Because it is rude, that one, Sylvia has to come down and, and have the power come on up, and obviously, it's not what she's hired to do and should be doing, and the kids shouldn't really learn. Because it is rude that one, Sylvia has to come down and, and have the power come on up, and obviously it's not what she's hired to do and should be doing, and the kids shouldn't really learn.
But it's not just kids. There's adults down there.
Oh, no, no, I know. No. We can, see, we're all old enough that anyone over twenty-five are still kids.
We'll speak to yourself.
Well, we can talk to Danny about setting that timer. So if the wifi is on, chances pretty good, they wouldn't be setting it.
Right.
Yeah.
No.
They were there when I left work today.
Oh, yeah, they're there all day.
They talk to you.
I bet if you went right now, this would.
They were.
We can, there's kids that hang out by the door that just do their cell phones. You know, obviously they don't have wifi, maybe at home, I don't know, but.
Interesting.
Yes.
Then you penalize a kid that just can't afford internet at home to do something, and I guess basically both sides of these kids not having that at home. But they could come down during library hours and use the computer with the internet.
Or we're stay at school because they have free tutoring to afford. We have internet there. That's just me being.
All right, so everything, we're getting some new windows at the library, and everything's going good there. Mike, you're up next. How's things going?
Very well, thank you.
Getting ready for the spring, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I got the two basketball tournaments coming out.
Your big one, right?
The big ones. Yeah, and then we got Easter egg and all that stuff coming up. Everything's going well there.
The volunteers stopped that.
Yeah, I could always use volunteers for that. The other thing is that Ryan Lincoln is here, and I wanted to mention, he's interested in purchasing our, uh, old batting cage net. Right now, I have no use for it right now. Um, he's interested in purchasing it right, you know, if it's up to you people. I could keep it and then build a batting cage later. That's, I have no plans of building a batting cage right now in the near future.
I don't have an issue with it at all, other than do we have to put it out to say that we have it for sale?
I think it's a good idea just to put it out to bid. So, Ryan, what's the issue on this thing?
So, yeah, my only thing about, and I understand that you guys have to go through your processes, I had that batting cage, it was mine, and when I.
Yeah, I bought it from Ryan.
When I left here to go to college, I sold it to the town because I was hoping that kids would be able to use it. Well, it was used for about three years, and then holes were cut in it and everything else, and so it's basically just sat in storage because I, I completely agree as to why it hasn't been used. Cause why would he put it back out there if it keeps getting destroyed?
Right.
Um, and it's just sitting in storage, and some of you may or may not know, I started a training academy for baseball.
No, you don't know. Congratulations.
So I'm, like, so I'm, uh, running that down in Bradley, and I'm looking to expand to a new facility, and I kinda like to, you know, see some use out of it, seeing as though it was mine before. Depending on the condition of it, I don't know what it looks like now. The last time I seen it, there was holes that were cut up in the side of it, so it is gonna need to be fixed. Back six years ago, I sold it to him for, I think it was either three or four hundred dollars, something like that, or, um, so I'd like to just.
So, if we were to sell it, we would have to put it out. If we were to make a charitable donation, can we do that?
You can, you can, basically, he donated it to the town, or sold it to the town. The town, I think, could in good conscience sell it back to him. But if it was anyone else, there would have to be a bid.
I think it would have to be a bid if we were gonna sell it, but I think these guys make a good point. Let's, what's the training come?
Main B baseball academy. I actually do have some kids from Woodland. I do come down and train. I, I probably tend to talk to kids from Woodland and Calis. I come down weekly to, to it. I'm trying to get it.
That's a good idea. This comes up as a good idea.
Yeah.
If we were to do a charitable donation to it, you could take one woodland kit for a free whatever session.
I'd, I'm willing to do whatever you guys wanna do. I've, I've done same things with, uh, other towns too. Like I run free clinics and stuff for, for kids. So it could be something where, you know, I hate limiting it to an amount of kids, little one to like ten kid ratio is kinda tough, but.
Not sure.
I mean, you know, I would be willing to, you know, try and run a clinic for some of the little league kids or something like that, depending upon what you guys wanna do. Like I said, I just, you know, obviously I, I'm from here, so my parents still live here. I kinda just like to see it get used where it's a need that I have now.
Well, I don't think putting it out to bid that we're gonna get any bids back that are gonna be worth anything. Potentially. Um, but I think I would be for charitable, we can do that. And if you could do something, coordinate with Mike or something that would, you know, help him with a coaching clinic, or maybe a kid come down to Bradley and do your, you know. I'm assuming you must be running something like sluggers or something.
Yeah, yeah, kind of. I run a, I run a facility at the YMCA, and then I have my own barn behind the house that I'm at. I also would be willing to come down here, seeing as though obviously I'm from here.
Yep.
And maybe I could do something, you know, coordinate with Mike or whatever, and, uh, try and do something on a weekend, run a, you know, a free clinic or whatever that you guys wanna do. I, I don't care. Like I said, I know whatever I have to do to kinda get it back, I'd just kinda like the city to use.
Would, would you need the vote that we're gonna donate the, um, batting cage back to Ryan Lincoln?
I make a motion we donate the batting net back to Ryan Lincoln.
Move second to donate the batting cage net thing back to Ryan Lincoln.
That's a ten.
All in favor?
I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Like I said, I'll do something in return. I'll work something out with him.
Outside of that, I'm all set.
As is. All set?
Perfect.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Perfect. Thanks, Ryan. As is.
As is. You guys caught me before I knew.
All right, moving on to Bayleville Police. Bob, how we doing?
Good. What are you looking at?
Well, I just wondered if you were gonna tell us about the new wifi for.
The library?
Oh, for up here. Yeah, yeah, from the library. Move those guys, give me that.
What are you driving?
I have a, let's see, a red, no, uh.
Yeah, I wonder about the part of the cruiser.
That's crazy.
Yeah. And I checked into, uh, Chevrolet Tahuhs that they use for, uh, police cruisers, and I would like to mine, bought something local, but, uh, every mechanic that I've talked to, they repeat, they hesitant, they're getting rid of those and going to the Ford because there's a tendency to burn oil when you lose the engines. And the Drangos aren't any better.
What about the Jeeps?
You want me to have a Jeep?
No, not enough space for a guy who.
You have a mind of its pace, mister. You want me to have a Jeep?
Well, there's the same car out there. I mean, the Jeep, no, the, the Grand, the Cherokee there, the, I mean, they all look the same, the Dodge.
Yes, I think, I think we should definitely look at the Jeep Grand Cherokee.
But good enough.
Was it Mercedes?
Who want a good old fashioned Huffy?
But Bob, on this engine thing, is this somebody local that has to do this, or is this right through Ford?
Through the towns. And it doesn't matter where it go, we, I checked on the warranties, uh, because this is a common issue with these cars. When you put the water pump inside, and they go. And you gotta disconnect everything and pull the engine up and put the water pump back in. And the first one went on the older car at sixty thousand. They ordered an aftermarket one put in, and that one went after twenty thousand on the same car. So, uh, town has helped us out with a bill on that one and took care of that. And on this, on the two thousand eighteen car, it's at eighty some thousand miles. You got there in your report, it's long in that.
And it looks like so far you've had zero applicants for full-time officer.
That's correct.
But you do have possible candidates, so people you may wanna send through the eighteen week course.
Yeah, I contacted some, and I, I might have to put out that ad again and word differently that, you know, if you've got no experience, uh, but we think you're a qualified candidate, we will pay for you to go to school. Uh, one of the kids is like, we talked to Tyler Cocker. He just runs the academy for, uh, corrections officer, I know, he was the one who won the road. I'm just trying to convince him to move back here. About that one, it was lovely. I'd like to allow that to happen.
All right, anything else for Bob? Nothing? All right. Bayleville Fire, John, how you doing? Brandon?
Good.
Brandon.
Brandon.
Everything going good?
Going good.
All right, nothing for John? Waste water. You wanna take up this, or are we gonna take it up in budget?
Talk now. I mean, the question is, can I get by until?
Yes, I talked, I talked with, um, both Argo and, um, Elite Tech, and definitely you can get through the rest of the season.
Cause we're looking at thirteen, that, at, uh, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars, they saved us on that repair that they were able to do, but we've got a way to spend it. Uh, fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five for a new boiler. You have waste water.
But it is going to be the same thing as a, that we have in this building, what's called a lead lag.
Right.
So you're not, um, running the entire boiler every time just to, for the sake of running it. There's the, I can do up an analysis over the past five years on how many gallons of oil you've saved in this building that's more than paid for this unit up here, so. And if we ever get to the point that Jamie's building gets insulated and gets windows and doors, he really could use something in the favor of somebody too. It would, it would scare you what that place used. I'm telling you, it's scary.
It's like the firebug here.
Yeah, and that's with new doors, but his building is way worse. All right, so wastewater, if you got anything, get with Chris. All right, so now we're gonna move on to sewer abatements.
Broadband giving the six.
Yeah, broadband. Um, our next phase is supposed to be done at, at the end of April. They are running about two weeks ahead at this point. So that will bring on the next group of houses, the, the folks who live on the other side, uh, Maple, Maple and that area.
Did you already get contact? Didn't you tell me you already got?
Yeah, I was in contact with them and, cause I knew they were doing some of the houses up there. And they told me mine was, they said they were ahead of schedule, but mine was scheduled to be done at the end of April, so.
The only thing good is they're finally actually getting to the hookups, you know, it's, hey, we're ready to go, but they didn't have any technician available to do it. We're, we're starting to see those hookups start to occur, and that's good.
Well, yes, they have, and, and I'll be honest with you, I couldn't make the appointment that I had. I have different commitments, so. I will tell you, keep your appointments.
But, uh, that's, that's moving right along. The, once they finish that phase, the only thing that will, will really be is the far end of, um, far end of, of Holt Road, heading up past the access road, and then heading, uh, down, uh, the rest of Route One and out to, uh, out Route Nine in Bear Cove. Once that's done, the last phase for us will be running out to Land Farm. And I would expect that to occur probably sometime this summer. But at this point, it appears that we will have some money left over, and when we finally do our final note on that, going for the least amount of money as we can.
Okay, so we have, uh, abatement here, and it's for user fees for Helen Burby, two bills. And I know an increase just, just because?
Kind of under the same categories of one D group last meeting.
Okay.
Just went way sky high for no reason. The BUD is not giving them any reasons.
The one down there?
The blue house that's the rental up here.
Oh, okay.
There's just a small family, two adults and one small child. It shouldn't have taken such a huge increase.
I make a mo- motion we approve, uh, account number six thirty of Bill Ones, or Bill fifty-one for sixty-five twenty-five, and Bill number fifty-two for one forty-five. I second that.
It's been moved in second to abate the count of six thirty, Bill number fifty-one for sixty-five twenty-five, Bill number fifty-two for one forty-five. All in favor? That's a vote. Send these down. Okay, up next is our, our motion to, um, do a special town meeting warrant for the one point five million to complete the cafeteria project, and Chris has put a possible motion in there.
The only thing is we're waiting for the attorney for the actual language. That should appear today, but he's running behind. So this, this motion will get us through, but, um, we will probably have to have a, um, short meeting sometime later this week to sign the actual motion, get that on the street as soon as possible.
Did we want it to say up to one hundred, uh, one million?
Nope.
Up to, okay.
And not to exceed, I believe. We also sent, right?
Not to exceed.
I move that the Bayleville Town Council approve the warrant for a special town meeting, see if the town will approve a loan for up to one point five million dollars maximum, not to exceed, uh, to complete the construction of the high school cafeteria.
So move second to have the, um, town council approve a loan for up to and not to exceed one point five million to complete the construction of the high school cafeteria project. All in favor? Okay, that's a vote. All right, and Chris, and I'm assuming probably Jamie's gonna give us an update. He talked a little bit about this.
This is, this is interesting. State called me up and said, you know how we were gonna turn the road over to you at the end of the project?
Yeah.
Well, we can't do that. DOT's told me we can't, and it was the local roads guy that told them. And I said, we still want the road. We're still arguing about it. He says, I can't give you the road. I said, but we don't wanna have to do road opening permits every time we want to touch it. We want, we want to be able to do whatever we want on it. We can come to an agreement like that. Herman has one, but I also asked him to kick it upstairs and see who can make that decision, whether they can give us the road or not. Hopefully, we can get on full ownership of the road except for the bridge. And if we can't do that, then there's an agreement out there with Herman that would be, you know, worst case scenario, where we would maintain the road. We would not have to get road opening permits or anything like that to do any modifications, but the actual ownership would go to the state. The state would consider giving us the road if we took access road to, and I have no intention of ever taking access road. That would be a, that would be a nightmare.
So they don't wanna give up ownership of Main Street, but they also don't wanna maintain it.
Right. Right, and this.
They don't maintain it now.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we would, we would be maintaining it. We would keep it in, in a good condition, but we certainly don't wanna get involved on it in access road.
No, cause that's a major project.
Right.
But who does North Street and Callis? Does the state have to have that? I mean, is that a state road, Jamie? Do you know?
I believe it is.
But is Callis, do they have an agreement?
Callis ma- Callis maintains it like Main Street is now.
Right, but can they do work on it? I.e. get into the sewer, dig it?
If they get permission and the road.
They have to get the. All right, so.
North and South Streets are the same in Callis. The state owns both of those.
Right, but they have to get permits, so, I mean, this would be an ideal situation, one, they keep the bridge.
But they're keeping the bridge no matter what.
Right.
No matter what. That was the first thing that I got clarified.
Right.
The state doesn't wanna give up the bridges, and I said, I absolutely did not wanna take over the bridge.
But our intentions were all along just to be able to, one, maintain and do what we want to it, and open up if there's ever something that needs to be done. So if they can clarify that, there's really no hiccup to this other than it's still a state road.
They were, they were very, um, generic with what they were telling us we could and couldn't do, and I was not very nice to him on the phone. Eddie, I would actually have talked to, unfortunately, but that's why he's the town manager and I'm not. But, uh, they wanna maintain it, maintain, maintain control over it so that we, we maintain the road, so they can have authority over us that we maintain the road. And I told him, you guys own it now. It's the worst roads we have in town. Our, you can't meet your own standards, but you wanna hold it over our head to meet your standards for our road. We're gonna keep it better than you've ever kept it.
Right, and we're bringing it back to their specs to begin with, so, I mean, other than it's not a town road, it's a state road. As long as we have the control over the road, I don't see any hiccup to this that really stems anything for the project.
The other thing we, we have the bids being open next week.
Right, now.
We have estimated it'll be one point three billion dollars. We have estimated it'll be one point three billion dollars, roughly is. And what could potentially happen, the same thing that's happened with the schools.
Potentially.
Alright, so, we need to, once we have that number, I'll be coming back to the council with, um, an alternative, if in fact it is higher.
But we may have to shorten the distance instead of going up past, so.
Exactly.
But we do have, our pre-bid meeting is Friday. Our bid opening is next Thursday. Annalise did the, um.
Projections?
The projections.
And where did she come in, I mean, she's so far up there, pretty.
On the sewer stuff, she's been pretty very good. She likes to stay on the high side, if at all is possible. Um, I would, I would feel, feel a lot more comfortable with what number she gave than anybody else on recent projects.
Right.
Yeah. Um, but have you said, she given you any of those numbers where she thinks?
That's the number that he said.
So, or, 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 alright.
Yeah.
Uh, potentially. Alright. Alright, so is that all you have on Main Street, other than what Jamie said he's, which is a good idea, cause those avenues are just terrible.
There's a lot of stuff, they, uh, I've, I've changed a bunch of things right up until a couple of weeks ago. Um, we're going to actually put in full-size basin covers at the bridge. And they're gonna drill twelve-inch holes down through the bridge, instead of us down there, you know, with a chipper in a six-inch hole with a pipe that stands eight feet underneath the bridge, so you've got ten feet up. So, and then she was gonna do one side, and I talked her into, listen, we're never gonna touch this again, let's do both sides. And, uh, there's a bunch of stuff anyways, it was just little stuff, and, but I said, this is our one chance. You know, we gotta do it now, whenever, and, and, uh, there's a couple of things that I just need to make sure everybody knows at the pre-bid meeting, like our, they're gonna take up, you know, four thousand feet of granite. Most towns, their granite is placed in concrete, ours isn't. So that's a cost savings, you know, we gotta make sure they know that when they're pulling it out of the ground, they're not gonna spend as much time. All they're gonna do is grab it and go, instead of taking all that concrete stuff with it, so. I want them to know that ahead of time, so the bid is realistic. But as of right now, it's been two outfits that have pulled books on, on this bid job, so. Which is good, I mean, the more we get, the better, and one of them that I thought was gonna put in hasn't yet, so we might have three.
Who's pulled so far? Um, T and P Drew and Northeast Bay.
Okay, so moving on to, in our packet, we have a possible budget meeting schedule. Now.
That would start, that, that starts at tomorrow for the first.
Right.
Or if you, if that does not work out, we, it would be the next Wednesday.
How come yours says the twelfth and mine says the eleventh?
Mine's twelve. The eleventh, the eighteenth, and the twenty-fifth. Or twenty.
April first.
April first, right.
Um, now, I'm fine with this, but.
Which is tomorrow, okay?
Well, I would like to see us get the budgets beforehand. And then come in with these, so we have some prelim questions answered.
So, next Wednesday?
So like, yes, and that's what I'm shooting for, but if you could get us, whether it's via email, we stop here and pick them up. The admin, police, and fire, so that, one, we can see the wish list. Two, we can see, um, questions of lines that haven't been spent, why they haven't been spent. That can possibly get this into a, um, you know, the process, cause I, as you know, when we get into the end of this, we really are gonna have to figure out what the mill rate's going to be and, and come up with a realistic number, I mean.
And we know, we know the school's gonna hit us for an increase of about four hundred thousand, just on what the state is cutting back. So in addition to any increases they have, you're looking at a four hundred thousand dollar increase over there.
So you guys for that can?
Next Wednesday and then?
The eighteenth, the first, and the eighth?
Yep.
Will be maybe next Wednesday, but the other ones are fine.
Well.
Would Tuesday be better?
Would Tuesday be better?
Yep.
Okay, so Tuesday would be the tenth, no? Seventeenth.
Same pattern.
Can't do that.
Bob's butt bringing the green beer.
Tuesday's the seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Twenty-fifth?
You won't be there, Greg.
Yeah, I can't be there. No, you can't be there the seventeenth, and you can't do the sixteenth, can you do the nineteenth?
I can.
Yep, I can do it.
Yeah, and then you won't be there, you've gotta go to the school, or that night, remember?
Just nothing but.
Spent two years.
Alright, so let's go back to the eighteenth, the first, and the eighth. Can you do the first and the eighth?
Yep.
And can you do the first and the eighth? Can you do the first and the eighth? Maybe? And then if you have any questions for, um, admin, police, and fire, you give it to Chris or myself, and we can.
Okay. Eighteenth, the first?
And you'll send us text messages, we might.
Yeah, I will come and pick in, pick up the, right now, on the revenue side, um, we, we have a little extra compared to last year so far, is what it looks like. But that would cover pretty much any increases that we might have. Short of any new capital projects that we may wanna add, like the extan- expansion on the fire department, for example, if I can, if I get a price for that. It's also time we start thinking about vehicle replacement for fire trucks, so it's time to set up a capital fund for them for the future, so that we don't hit everyone all at once with, hey, here's three hundred thousand dollars, boom. Cause the next truck is gonna, if it's new, it's gonna cost over three hundred, probably closer to four.
Alright, so that's, if you go. Alright, and you'll go over the county budget, budget assessment by sixty-one thousand?
Seven hundred and nine dollars. That, we have no choice, in fact, I've, I've been seeing some stuff from various towns where the county, the selectmen in various towns are saying, we're not gonna pay it. Uh, you don't have any choice, this is one of those things that you must pay as a town. And ours is five hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. And that represents about, a little over nine percent of the county budget.
And that is up, what was it, five forty-three last year?
Five forty-three, yeah, or thereabouts. Actually, five, yeah, yeah, so, that's not too bad, but our valuation keeps going up, and that's, that's killing us.
Now, we should see next year, having no, a little bit of reduced valuation.
Should start to see a little bit of reduced. The other thing that's gonna be kinda nice, if it happens, is if that seafood goes, uh, plant goes into Jonesport, they're talking a hundred and fifty million dollars in valuation.
Right.
So that would kinda take a little of the heat off of this a little bit. That's what we'd like to see.
Okay, so moving on, town managers report, you're gonna give us an update on the coronavirus?
Coronavirus, you know, it's.
He should know, he's had it three weeks.
It's, uh.
Four.
You just gotta tell me I had it.
Alright, um, we're looking at, um, you know, CDC's put out guidelines and guidance, and the biggest, biggest thing, um, a couple of things. The way that the town functions, um, most of our employees are in, are in a setting where they really don't get exposed uh, directly, like you would say in a school setting, or, um, anything like that. Public works, they're in their trucks, or they're out on a work site, they're pretty much isolated from the rest of the community. Um, Danny, working at the transfer station, he does have a bit more interaction with the public. But, uh, the police, you guys do have interaction, but again, you're not seeing two or three hundred people a day, you're seeing twenty or thirty. So your number of contacts per day is probably down somewhat. At the window here, that's one of our, um, primary areas of concern, because you do have the public in and out all throughout the day, whether they're sick or whether they're not, and you do have staff standing there, basically getting whatever is being spread. However, uh, CDC guidelines are pretty simple, if you're sick, stay home. Okay? Hey, I'm a well. Uh, sick employees, uh, should not be, uh, should be separated from other employees.
Quarantined.
Yeah. Uh, emphasize staying at home when sick. Uh, the one that's tough for me is covering my cough, you know, the proper etiquette. Making sure we, we clean, um, we clean the areas, and advise, uh, employees on traveling, uh, to take certain steps. If you have sick people at home, you probably won't, gonna, going to want to consider staying home. And if someone does have COVID nineteen, they need to let us know, and, uh, let, and let us, let us try to work with the other people, uh, in town to, uh, try to get them, um, tested for exposure. Test kits are coming out in large numbers now, uh, one point one million as of today, there'd be another, uh, eight hundred thousand by the end of today, and another four and a half million by the end of the week. So they're ramping up very quickly. State of Maine will expect their first results today. We're one of fourteen states that does not have a coronavirus case at this point, however, that will probably not last. We are the only New England state that doesn't have any cases. And then, uh, your biggest block was half the states that don't have it are out there, North Dakota, South Dakota, Montana. But expect that it will reach us, the question is how, um, bad it will be. If you look at China, uh, they're already seeing a huge drop off in cases, so kinda hoping for that. But it's, 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 you know, common sense stuff for coronavirus. But the test kits are available, so if we suspect any, anyone suspects they have it, and, and look at the symptoms, they're online. Fever is one of the things that you're looking at, and it's more than just a cold, so.
Well, I, I just have a question regarding this, because obviously it's been a topic for quite some time. How come this has been on the Lysol can for years? And then I actually, I thought it was fake news. I actually went and looked at a can that we've had in our house for probably close to three years, and it's on there.
Well, there's, there's, that's why it's COVID nineteen, it's, it's, there's, there's all sorts of coronavirus. The other thing is.
Coronavirus.
The other thing that you, you, you need to, uh, realize is that, um, things like Lysol and any, any product that clean, that kills other organisms, technically is a pesticide. Which we don't think of it that way, we think, oh, it's a disinfectant, well, if it kills other organisms, it's a pesticide. And, um, you know, the government right now is just trying to get it all killed. If you look at China, they're spraying everything down, that's gonna be an interesting environmental hazard by the time it's all said and done. But that's where we stand on.
Do we have some Lysol wipes, Clorox wipes, something at the front desk?
We're trying to get them. We, I, in fact, they, we had no luck last week, we, I, I got some yesterday, so we should be able to.
I mean, the amount of people coughing and then rusting their hands there, really don't work.
I went down to pick up the hands sanitizer.
You need some of your place.
You can make your own, I guess, but I'm not.
Yeah, but the, um, the wipes, like the Lysol wipes.
I like New York City.
They would get some yesterday.
I like New York City, what they did.
Uh, task list?
Yes, let's go over that.
Yeah.
Are you looking at the list that I put in there, because I'd like to get it narrowed down, you know?
Yeah, we've got, let's see, um, the crawl line for broadband.
The first one's duty free.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give you the lawyer's name, um, and then we can just go direct contact with him on this, and then see what we can do regarding that. And then the next one is crawl line.
Crawl line for broadband, that's done.
Yep.
So it's that I can cross it off the list and go?
Right, yep, improvements to the town office, we've made what we can this year, and that's the insulation. We've insulated everything except the two vehicle bays. In many cases, we had insulation, just pulled apart, but we also added the five inches insulation, so these, these rooms, uh, these offices in the building should be, um, we should be using a lot less of fuel on, on this here.
I don't think, I think we should leave, there's still improvements that need to be done.
Okay, yeah, like cameras and the.
Well, just, I, we talked about paying different things.
We have windows for the fire bay, right, I mean, those are still old sliders.
I think those need to, that needs to stay on there.
And I, and I'd like to really also insulate at least the fire bay, because the amount of heat going out of that is incredible. Uh, another seller deed, uh, I haven't heard anything new from Mahar.
I haven't heard. Does Noah still want this?
Yes, he does.
He's been in every day.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's in at least a couple times a week, but waiting on Mahar to get that deed cranked out. Uh, spending club, give me a copy. Alright, the Washington Street letter, um, Jacqueline got that, who has, has, uh, reacted to that, so that can go.
Right, and I think that should stay on there, because it's a follow-up that needs to happen in the spring.
Uh, vacation payroll, I'm gonna probably, uh, give some language that we wanna put in the new, uh, or an update of the, uh, policy.
And do you see that within?
I would say probably, it'll be after I get the first budget meeting going.
Yeah, so somewhere.
Yeah, in the near future.
Would May first make the most sense?
May first, yep.
Let's skip that one up there, too.
Yeah, we're about to.
And Bay Cat link on the town website.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
What, what, that's the, this here, the, the cable, right?
Yeah.
The Bay Cat link on the town website.
Yeah, that's, when we go on the new website, we want the Bay Cat, um, link there, so that they can go straight to that.
Oh, alright, so, but where are we on the website?
Uh, I'm still feeding information to her, uh, and Amy Jean Roy says she's gonna give us the access to the site.
What was the, we must have had a launch date for the new website. What was that launch date?
We had started with a launch, we were looking at a launch date of last September, and then when I basically had other things going and dropped that. And she's patiently waiting for me to give her everything that I promised her.
Alright, I'm, I'm, I'm impatiently waiting.
Right.
Well, the town website, I, I feel like it's been a long time since we went over it. We talked about it, and I, I mean, I wanna see us with a functioning website, not two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen agendas and minutes and stuff on there, I mean.
Right, so let's, let's put a date to this.
Okay.
And you know what needs to be, you know what needs to be left to be done, I don't know.
One May?
Is that, are you fine with one May, April fifteenth, what are you thinking? I mean, if all that's left is Amy Jean Roy to give us.
No, I'm still feeding information that she's putting on for the various documents. And right now, I'm gonna probably, I, I, the tax information's also gonna be on there, but right now, it's just gonna be a, you know, a listing by page, as opposed to an interactive, uh, listing.
Yeah, but we could've had the website up and going and fed her things after the fag, we don't even have a word on the site.
Well, that's the thing, she's, she really wants to get them on there before we set up, so she knows how much space we're gonna end up using. Cause what we're using right now, the current website, it doesn't have anything on it. I will try to get that, it's May first.
Are you, go to May first?
If, if they have, I mean, the, yeah, the sooner the better, cause I mean, like, I talked to you the other day, we're still paying fees on this website, that right now is, it's crap. It is, it's, it's been crap forever, hasn't changed since I got on my.
One of the things that we've run into down at work is getting the domain from the person that has it now.
Yep.
To relinquish it to the new people, and, and that this person is in all that kingdom, giving it up. So that is one thing that, that kind of.
Can we hold back payment on the, on the one we're waiting on, to get that?
Yeah, she's not willing to give it up, let's not pay her. I, I mean, I don't know if that's the case or not, but if that's the case, you don't get, you don't get paid for hosting this until.
Yeah, I don't understand why she can't re-release it.
She's making money on it.
Uh, we're on, we have the same thing going on, it's a totally different company, that we're paying two people right now. to do our website and one is not acting.
Is she the same one that started the website five or six years ago?
Yep.
Yeah, this, this is totally two different people. This is totally two different.
Not what I mean, the one that Amy Jean Roy is, but.
Yeah. Jeez.
Okay, so, alright, so we've got kind of clarification on that. Sooner the better on that will be better.
Property maintenance is that time and we've, we've gotta do something this year, uh, make it stick.
Well, alright.
And again, I think we're going to be shorting, shortening out the time period.
Well, I think you need to be more involved in it. I think your letters hold more clout than Andy's letters are gonna hold.
Okay, the other thing is today, I talked with Andy for a while and we're, before we even get into the property maintenance once we're going after the, um, junk cars on registered vehicles. And we've already, uh, we've already got a plethora of, we, we're making a very long list and they'll get the first letter.
But, but ninety days is way too long because if you say it's gonna be April first, so you got April, May, June, and then you gotta give them a second letter.
Yeah, you're, you're in, you're in July.
Just, just do thirty day letters.
As well, that's what they are, thirty day letters, but for the first thirty days.
Then do ten day letters.
At the end of thirty, yeah.
These are people though that, I mean, that's not a surprise. These are people that have been on this list for.
I would do ten day letters.
We'll send a letter out now just saying, hey.
They've got a letter every year and nothing's done. I mean, it's not gonna be a surprise when you're not around.
But if you did ten, if you did a ten day letter, then in thirty days, you can take action on it.
But I may be coming back to you guys with a change in the order, which should be no problem.
Because, I mean.
I said to Chris today, when you look on Facebook and people write about, that used to live here, what they write about the town when they come back to visit or they don't come back to visit because they're so disgusted by the way the town looks, you know, it's just, let's get it cleaned up.
Do, can I ask a question about the David Troy property in the junction? Does the town own that?
Yes.
Is, that red car's been there for two or three months now? There's been no footprints in or out of that house? I don't know if he's in there and dead. I really don't know, but if we own the property, uh, I don't know. I'm not going in without David Byrne and his bomb robot because that place is absolutely scary, the way he's got that set up.
Is he getting fuel delivered or anything?
No.
I know he's not picking up his mail. They said he, he hasn't picked up his mail forever.
Say the guy that lives in the garage across the street saw him when he came back and then I've never seen any movement after that, so.
Well, I guess, can I ask this? Why don't you get David Byrne and do a wellness check?
Because I just can't kick in that door just because I.
I'm not saying kick in, but I mean, if you haven't seen anything around it, I don't, his sister used to be a contact person.
Well, he's, uh, he applied for his vet license again in, in New York. I got a call from, from them about his situation. So I don't know, but if we own the house, then I'm thinking we can just get in there.
That's one thing that we need to take better control of, are the properties that the town owns, where we are in relationship to people making the payments on it and when we take the action to say what we did on Main Street. Because we made a stance on the one on Main Street and it's worked out fine.
Because the other thing is if we own it, the liability, because what if some kid gets in there?
I thought, I thought we talked about if we own it, shouldn't be anybody in it.
Shouldn't be anyone in it. Well, no, what we, what we determined there was that if they're willing to, a payment arrangement that meets by not going behind, we would do that. That person on Main Street was not willing to go into a payment arrangement.
But we did have the one successful on Broadway. He's caught up and it's been there again.
I guess I, I guess I didn't understand that with the payment arrangement, we're still owning that. Because if something happens, payment arrangement or not, we own it.
This is, this is, uh, a common problem with towns is that people, the town owns the property. We've got sort of a couple of them. Technically, the town owns them. However, the town, but usually, towns usually don't take possession of them if there are people in them because you have to, the eviction process becomes pretty nasty. But the other thing is that any damage done, um, getting them out, you're liable for and you have to, um, maintain insurance on the property, which we do on some properties. It's, it's, it's a nightmare when you have people actively living in the house. In his case, I know he came back and, and what, the fault?
No, it's, uh, just a few months ago he was back.
Okay.
Brought his car back and, and since then, there's been no activity there.
So there's a, there's a fair chance he's probably just left the car and left, but we don't know if he's.
You don't know that with him. So, so if he hasn't made payments on this for three months.
No, but you, you, the other thing is if you go inside, and that's why I wanna talk to the attorney, see if we can, what we can do to get inside that building, but.
Well, once we own it, we own the build.
We own the building, but we may or may not, um.
They still have rights. I can't just.
No, no, I know, no, I know they still have rights. I get, I get.
But if there's no, if there's no one that we can, that we haven't seen anyone make a move there all year. And the post office would be the logical place where he would show up to get mail.
Well, that guy, you just don't know.
Yeah.
And the library.
The what?
And the library.
Is man around the library? It's about.
Now, if we, if we say, okay, let's, let's go into the building, how do we do that?
On a night that shares have coverage.
So we also made a determination that we were going to, because we as a town can file a lien on a house just like anyone else without taking possession.
It's true. Well, then we already, we already own the house then.
Well, the, yeah, but I'm saying moving forward, we made a decision that if it was not to the best of the town's interests to take quick claim deed possession of it, we could file a lien as a lien holder on that house.
But we never, we never get to the point of filing a quick claim deed anyway because we.
We foreclosed.
We foreclosed on the lien, right.
Right, but we, moving forward, we can make the determination.
Yeah, I remember doing that before. We've done that before.
To, to file a lien rather than a foreclosure on a piece of property.
And it's worded that we put our best interest on to take it or something like that.
Something else.
Would it make sense to demo it with?
It absolutely, in my opinion, would.
There's a lot of houses that we need to look at right now that need to be addressed to probably be downloaded, I mean.
I mean, that one in particular because there is, there's almost certainly something.
Well, we just gave you one tonight that should be destroyed. And that's beyond repair. I know that the one on Hillside can probably be downloaded within the next probably couple of weeks.
Well, at least those properties are in, you know, not in eyesore. If somebody's driving in town, when they first drive into Baileyville, that's the first thing they see.
That's right.
Bloodline, the Seavey property.
We have that there.
Well, one of the, one of the issues, if, if you, if you're just even talking Seavey property, technically, we own it. But A, they're living in it and, um, there's a, well, there's a whole nightmare with, with that one. The other thing is we have a policy that we don't give them back the, um, we don't sign it back to them unless they've paid everything up to and including the newest taxes.
If the doctor even prefers.
Right. Now, the problem with that is if you took that to a court a lot, they're gonna say, what is actually in foreclosure? And you, and you're probably gonna have to relinquish it, but in most cases, they will pay. They will pay up to the, you know, current.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, any of these properties that you have on here, whether it's Missouri property, the Seavey property, the Campbell property, they all need to be addressed just like any others. The, the, the one thing, well, I mean, I guess we don't own the Missouri property.
In fact, that's been signed, supposedly signed over to someone else.
Yeah, she has a, you.
The next door neighbor, Kurt Ransfield.
As long as it's been filed at the registry. It's not filed at the registry. Missouri's still on there.
He's still technically owns it.
Mahar might be there two weeks ago and.
Then Dennis would have filed it then before.
So we need to address those properties just like we would anyone else.
Right.
And regardless whether we own or don't own it, they need to be addressed for maintenance issues. Now, as far as the town owning it, that's where we have some clout in the, in the game.
Yeah, we own, we own the, uh, the property with the burnt out house and the trailer.
Right.
So we do have some clout there.
But we had, we had them. We could have not, we could have had them clean that house down before we allowed them to even bring that trailer in there. So we made the situation worse by allowing them to do it.
I can't disagree. We thought doing that, we were doing the right thing and, and it turned out to be just the opposite.
Yeah, because now they've got it both, you know, they've got, they're taking, eating it too.
Well, I, I think that one needs to be addressed because that is coming into town legitimately as the first, I think, so.
And the other thing is the Bailey property, they had a yard sale there most of the summer and fall.
Right.
Do you wanna look at addressing that, that one specifically?
Well, I think yes. I think that he needs to understand that we can't have that condition that was in for the entire year. Like, having to get out there and to clean, pick it up, I mean. So these all fall under the really, the property maintenance, but they really need to be addressed, prioritized really. I mean, all of these ones you have on there.
I think Seavey is, is top, Campbell is, is further down the list because basically all he's got at this point is, uh, a collect, nice collection of cheaper anglers. Uh, and reserve property.
There's your Jeep.
Oh, no, that wasn't the Jeep, I think.
He's got three up there, so there you go.
But I don't know if they're junk, so I bet he could walk out there and get every one of those running.
I bet he can do, yes.
Yeah. Signs for the field.
They're in, right, Mike?
Yeah, I got it. Just waiting for it to start.
Just wait for them up. Uh, bluebird insulation.
Well, let's go back to that. When do you think you'll have a mock night?
At this spring. It is that day of, well, it depends on the frost.
Alright, well, I thought we were hanging them on the fence.
Some of them are gonna be on the fence, some of them you don't like Spender Club, so, well, you, you could put Spender Club on the, on the back store.
There's a good size, there's a good sized fence, I mean, signs to put on the fence. You need some sort of, uh, uh, wood or brace or something to be signs. I mean, these are good sized signs.
Well, I know, but down here at your Main Street one, you've got the electrical boxes out there that's got a beautiful place to put that sign.
Yeah, I, I don't know the measurements. I'd have to check it, but yeah.
Right, but I mean, well, you can make that work. Um, but anyways, I wanted to talk to Jamie about the Spender Club. I would like to see this summer that if we could put a, not a fence, but maybe the rocks along there so that they can't go farther out into the field.
To park?
To park and plow snow, you know what I mean? Because what I'm seeing right now is that you have the potential of, we get luck, we lucked out this year where we really haven't had a lot of snow. But if you had a lot of snow, that used to just get dumped way out in the field. Do you wanna go with the fence line?
Yeah, I mean, kinda like where the.
I'd have to look at it again to see that. Kind of like where the milling stop.
Yeah, like we had a, um, at one time, or they might add a, a, um, soap fence that went along there. So something similar to there, only in concepts of maybe rocks that are gonna be cheaper because you own some.
Yes, oh, yes. How's the rock situation? All you want.
I do have a lot more now than I had two years ago, so. The blueboard is, blueboard is done.
However, getting the, the tape residue off is gonna be a nightmare. I worked on one of them with some Gooby Gone and that, man, that's gonna take a while to get rid of. But other than that, they seem to be working quite nicely.
How did they do it at the elementary school?
They replaced the hole, the hole thing.
All new exteriors, all frames.
Have you talked to them to see if they got an idea, the people have installed it?
Uh, he thought Gooby Gone would be the, the thing to, to get the tape off or something similar to that.
Self duct tape on there?
Yeah. You got something?
I might.
Torch.
I'll check with my people.
No torches, no torches.
His distributor just went on.
The opportunity zone, um, Mr., uh, Walton there is, is working with David Whitney to try and get that going. I don't know where they are on that. Um, I'll have to give him a call and find out where he stands. But I'm also, uh, he's ready, he, he desperately wants to know the whole plug on there or pull the trigger on there. Because he can, he can, he can pull in a ton of money with their project.
Dismissed the watch, huh?
Right, or, yeah, uh, yeah, Wong.
Wong, have you, Ken Wong? Have you had a conversation with, um, Scotts?
With, yeah, about, uh, three weeks ago.
Okay.
Trying to put that. Internet website we talked about. Seavey property, that's.
It's gotta become priority.
It's become a nightmare, even worse than it was before. Uh, CBS is still trying to figure out what, and, and we, we may end up going to someone else because I'm, I'm not feeling like they're really working hard to try and get hold of Wong's.
Who have you talked to, Travis or?
No, Josh, CBS.
Have you talked, is Travis still there?
Cause he's actually, he, he actually done a lot of work down there and it's been, it's been pretty fair to work with.
Now, was Travis out of the Chai's office or Brewer's office?
Travis is out of Chai's, isn't he, for CBS?
I think he's earlier. Brewer, okay, then I'll call Brewer. Cause Joshua's the Chai's office.
School numbers for ongoing projects, I guess we kind of somewhat hopefully know those.
We got, we got that one. Joint meeting with school board, we got that one.
Well, and I think let's bring it up. Are we in agreement to meet with them quarterly? And when one of us can meet on one of their Tuesday meetings, if we can make a conscious effort to go, just to be in the audience?
Might help them.
Thank you.
Well, I know, but it's very hard for you to wear two hats at a school board meeting.
It can be difficult, but I.
That don't bother me though.
Most of the stuff doesn't bother me, so. Just, that's it.
And meeting with the BUD, orange up with Andy from CBS.
Alright, is there anything else that needs to be added to the action list? Um, obviously, we just said the, you're gonna coordinate the school board meetings.
He was gonna get the plans for the boiler system.
Can I make a suggestion on the school board side? A couple of years ago, you guys had come to us, thought it'd be a good idea to come in occasionally for our budget situation. Would it be an idea or maybe you guys come in with a, like you had previous years on, giving us a, numbers, so to speak, on what would be nice to see, where we need to stand?
I have not opposed that.
On a budget side?
We can run numbers to, on a mock budget on what we think the school is gonna come in at to get to a closing of a possible.
Would that be, that would be upstuck for our end also? Somebody might not like it, but I just don't wanna be too far above where we should be.
Yeah, cause even with no increase, we're looking at four hundred thousand this new school. If the school came in with everything the same amount.
Cause I know you guys have done that previous years, so.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Does anyone else have anything to add to the, um, action list?
Um, yeah, I think this should go on here. The, um, folks from, they come in on the solar energy. Or, I know we were talking about staying in touch with them, finding a lot, finding some property here in town.
We directed them to two different law, uh, pieces of property. One was the BUD. They've got a piece of property that comes across, um, starting at Old Road heading out, um, north of, um, Cal Prince Road, kind of goes at an angle. It's long and narrow, probably about no more than a hundred yards wide at any point, but it's like thirty-five hundred feet long. And that was one potential site. Um, there is, where their pits are, uh, near the intersection, there was a potential site there, but that was only about five or six acres. And then the, the other site that was offered that we pointed them to was actually landfill. Uh, the, you, the already completed portions of the landfill at the, um, mill, the Mills landfill. Uh, because they've got a completed section there that is nice open space, probably again, only seven or eight acres.
I, we'd al, we'd also asked about Monarch.
I mean, I, we don't have anything that's, that's. We don't have anything that's, that's, uh, wide open, or can easily be made wide open. Our, our, our landfill.
I talked to him for an hour and a half one day, on our landfill, our old landfill.
That's not wide open enough, a landfill?
You're talking about the one way out past the demo.
The, the, the old, old one.
The old, old one.
Out by the pit, the lagoon.
Because it was located close to the lines, which would make it easier.
When I talked to him, he was pretty excited about it. He was gonna go to his higher ups, I just don't know, it's, it's been kind of a quiet period here, so I don't know the timeframes of what Chris is. Well, the last I heard, they really were interested in the mill landfill. Now, whether that was prior to Jamie, that's the last I heard, is that that was.
Because the last that I knew about it was the meeting they were at, and I haven't heard anything.
And the, the other thing is, is Eastern Maine Electric would have to come onboard, and that's the other piece of the puzzle. If it was a Mira, they think it would be pretty easy, but Eastern Maine is the one to do what Eastern Maine wants to do.
Because we talked about, well, we actually have a substation out on that road already. Um, my thinking, just throwing it out there, I would think it'd be a hassle with the landfill, because that's all, that'd be all the mill's electricity, right? So they'd have to go quite a ways to actually hook into electricity grid that wasn't the mills. I would think that'd all be landfill.
But you've got.
I mean, uh.
But you've got three phases up to the transfer station.
Yeah, we have.
And that's, that's one advantage.
Well, I said they've got, they've got lines out to the lagoon. I said, so if, if you could get from our substation and piggyback on their poles, just to get a line out there. I don't think we, the landfill isn't big enough to give them, you know, in the long run, what they would want. But it'd be a good test site to give them a five acre lot, to, to see how it pans out. They just couldn't expand in that one area, which I'm sure would be nice to be able to do once more, but. Jamie?
I could tell you with the B U D side, um, our last one's meeting, whoever it was that had approached, the B U D. Were supposed to attend that meeting, they never showed, so.
They came here.
No.
This was after that meeting.
Yeah, they had asked the month previous, and last month they were supposed to show up. We had actually had a whole time set aside for them to present their case, and they never showed, so. And Andy, since the time he talked to them, which was three weeks before our meeting, to our meeting, he never heard a thing at all, so. And he hasn't, I don't believe he's heard anything since. So I'm not sure if that was just a case of coming through and then getting some people's hopes up or whatever and. Found someplace better, I don't know, I'm not aware, aware of anything more.
The, the one thing too is.
Might know on our next meeting next week.
It would impact definitely on the, um, our fuel noise, low income people. Because they, rather than having heating or, you know, heating or, they could go on like this.
Um, the other thing that I, and I don't know where we are. Have we talked with the fencing regarding the cemetery, Jamie, I know where we left it in the late fall. Have we talked with them getting it? Get all that in my budget. Perfect. Just wait for my Wednesday. Or, or. No previews.
Well, they'll, they'll get a preview, they'll, they'll get it.
So that doesn't need to be on there, is it? All right, so seeing no others, anyone, do you have anything, Marilyn, that needs to go on there? Um, if we go back to the vacation, the payroll, we've got a May first date on that. The website, May first sooner than later on that, it would be better before May first. Um, I'll get you the lawyer's name from Hollywood Florida on that. And then you can just go direct with them and hopefully get better results. Um, and then you're gonna prioritize the C V property.
That'll be the, that'll be the.
Interesting.
So on the vacation and, and payroll, what you're looking at doing is changing the wording so that they cannot carry to and get paid for too? Is that what the thing is?
Yep.
And we'll also look at the needs to be on here. Um, moving forward regarding occupied residence tax over, or town loan property. And one, legal clarification. And two, I think we need to go back, because we made a, you know, a statement on the Main Street property. That, you know, I think we, we only reached a certain to what we did, and I know you weren't here.
About two weeks after we pulled out that property on Main Street, the, uh. One of the people who had, I guess, lent money on it, called up and said, hey, we, you know, we'd like to pay for that.
Way it goes.
Way it goes.
Well, I'm not talking, I'm talking the one.
Yeah, the one he's talking about.
You're talking the blue one, I'm talking, because I didn't think Chris was here on that.
All the ones that were.
Cold.
Cold, the yellow house on the corner, that was Rick who was in on that. That was actually the first one that we. Well, no, we sold it. And, and that's the thing with these properties that we own, we sold it.
Occupied.
Occupied. Because it's weird, because theoretically, we could own it, but somebody's living in it, paying somebody else rent, like, but we own it, it's just kind of a weird. That's what we did with one twelve Main Street, is we put it out to mid occupied.
Is that the one that the gentleman and his son came up here and talked to us, okay, yeah, we put that off to mid, yeah. He can, he, he looked like he was gonna die.
No.
No?
No.
The last summer?
No, that's been.
That was, that was the guy I want.
Yeah.
So this is, that, okay, this one was down on Main Street.
This has been, that's been in Jason Pratt's possession for a few years.
Okay.
Now, Rick was here on that. So, but anyways, that's what we did, is we, we sold the property occupied.
Their responsibility, you know, they want to do.
Whatever they want to do. All right, so moving on from our list.
Uh, just to let you guys know, I sent a letter to the, uh, State Committee on Transportation at the Legislature. Um, regarding L D fourteen ninety eight, fourteen ninety eight, basically, in its original form, was going to say, listen, you have three exceptions for weight limits on main law, on main roads. And they are at, uh, from the Cal, uh, Calis Customs to the mill. Uh, coming across the, the bridge in Madawaska, going straight into the, uh, Fraser Paper Mill. And then the third one is coming across, I guess, at Van Buren, and they can then go to the mill. Those are the only three exceptions where Canadian, they can come across at a hundred and eight thousand versus a hundred thousand. Troy Jackson, um, decided to introduce legislation to open up all roads in the state of Maine in a hundred and eight. Knowing that the Transportation Committee would say, oh, hell no, because a lot of the roads just aren't designed to handle. And then his comeback was, okay, you're saying no for all these other roads, then let's have it for nobody. And essentially, what he wants to do is, um, eliminate or limit the amount of Canadian fiber coming across. And if you look at a, you know, if you look at a circle around the mill, Canadian fibers have to, have the space. But they would rather us be paying for American fiber coming from Marston County coming down. Um, the mill is, sees that that would be an impact on, on, uh, what would happen to them, and basically, I wrote a letter of support saying that we. Support, um, the mill's position on that, as opposed to, um, supporting Senator Jackson's position. Senator Jackson's up there in Allegash, and he's one of those guys that, that hardcore, that if they're, if they're not American, then they don't need to be. Putting any fiber at this stadium. Anyway, sent that letter of support to the bill, and that was three weeks ago. A little bit more than that. Voluntary road tolls, we have a policy already for that. And it does allow me to limit who and when. All right, so last, in fact, the last line of that. So I can, I can, um. I can move it around as needed, so any conflicts, I can handle those. All right? And, let's see. Um.
All right, public comments, Lori? Ryan?
I never get a chance to come home, I know you guys want to go home, but I have one question. As some of you guys know, I always run the Peter Mercer Memorial Tournament, I run that for, this would be year six. I know that you guys just purchased the Spender Club field back, I'd like to bring that tournament back here instead of doing it in Calis. Are you guys planning on making that field playable, usable? I know that there was a couple of kids that, well, I say kids, mine, it was Dustin, Lanny, and Kyle Pike. Did a tournament last year to raise money to buy a, a temporary fence to use down on the Spender Club field. So I guess I have not just to talk to Mr. Boys about it either, I just didn't know what your guys' goals were with that.
Work in motion.
Okay.
But it is, will eventually become a usable field, yes. Today, maybe not, but it is a usable field, yes.
Right, the high school.
Oh, you just, you just can't use it there, because like the pitcher mound, it's, well, like the safety hazard with the pitcher mound and stuff. But eventually, I'd like to bring it back down, down here, so.
Appreciate it.
Paul? Nothing. Marilyn? Nothing. Jamie? Sylvia?
Nothing.
Nothing. Jamie? John? And Mike? Outset? Perfect. All right, so our next order on here is to consider an executive session for a carby abatement. Under thirty six M R S A, chapter one oh five, subsection eight four one.
I make a motion we enter executive session for a carby abatement thirty six M R S A. Chapter one oh five, subsection eight four one.
Bail and.
Second. We'll move second to enter an executive session at seven forty five, for carby abatement under thirty six M R S A. Chapter one oh five, subsection eight forty one. All in favor?